Okay, good evening. Welcome to the September 10th Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter-Fark, who's the Deputy Planning Manager for the City of Nashua. Across the way, we have Mr. Jay Mancara, Mr. Steve Lionel, who's our Vice Chairman, Ms. Estafia Boris, Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, who's our Secretary, and I'm JP Boucher, and I serve as your Chairman. This meeting tonight is recorded by written transcript, audio tape, and video. We ask that you please direct all testimony into the microphone, and only one person speak at a time. If you don't have tonight's copy of the agenda, the agenda is on the back table in the back of the auditorium. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests for deviations from the Nashua zoning code in form of applications for special exceptions and variances. And I'll explain both of those real in detail. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria required for this board to grant a request for a special exception are: One, the requested use must be listed in the Table of Use Regulations as a special exception. Two, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Three, the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage sewer system, or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. Four, any special regulations for the use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. And five, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of a variance are: The variance will not be contrary to public interest; the spirit of the ordinance is observed; substantial justice is done; the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the City of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear any in all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting, which we have a quorum tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the City of Nashua Planning Department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. You can contact Mr. Fark for more information on that. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part of tonight's meeting is what we call the public hearing. This is where the applicant and the citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony will be as follows. First, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then those with opposition or with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then the applicant has five minutes to speak in rebuttal. And then finally, a representative, and only one person of those in opposition or with questions, will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. There is a timing clock up here. You'll see a red light, orange light, and green light that will count you down and will remind you if your time is getting near the end. Please direct all testimony to this board and not to anyone in the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board, and we will get them answered. The second part of tonight's meeting is what we call the public meeting. This is where the board debates the merits of this case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you silence your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, we'd ask that you step out in the hallway. Acoustics are excellent here, so we can hear everything that you're saying back there in the audience. Are there any questions from the audience before we get started? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Other than we'll do case number two first and case number one second.
Okay. All righty. So we will call case number two, listed as number two first, and that is for Linda Boden, Two Chaucer Road. Linda Boden, owner, Two Chaucer Road, Sheet B Lot 1615, requesting the following variances: One, from Land Use Code, Section 190-264, to exceed the maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, forty-three percent proposed; and two, from Land Use Code, Section 190-31, subsection A, section one, to exceed maximum height of an accessory structure within ten feet of a side and rear property lines, twelve feet permitted, twenty feet proposed. Both requests to construct a 25-foot-by-40-foot detached garage. It's in the R18 zone. Welcome, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, attorney with Pruney and Pearlman, here on behalf of Linda Boden and Roger Bolduc, owners of Two Chaucer Road. We have, just as you said, Mr. Chairman, two variances for you tonight on the accessory structure, the size of the structure and the height of the structure off of the ten-foot setbacks under the accessory dimensions, separate from the dimensional use table. I just want to begin with two corrections for the board for tonight. First off, the notice that was on the agenda, and the notice that came in the mail, said that our height of the garage is going to be at twenty feet. That's not true. The proposed height for the garage is going to be a maximum of sixteen feet, the peak of the roof line. The twenty feet was before we had the renderings that we have submitted that are part of your packet. So we're requesting four feet less than what was noticed for the height of the garage. The second thing, Mr. Chairman, is on the last page of your packet, there was a letter of concern. That does not belong to our case. That's for a different case. I think that's case number four tonight, so you can disregard that with respect to this application, please. What we're proposing, you've seen the plans from Granite Engineering, both the ZBA site plan and the rendering that we provided of the garage, pretty straightforward. Mr. Chairman and members, we're proposing the 25-by-43-bay standalone garage. We have the garage tucked into the back corner of the lot for a number of reasons. We're trying to maintain as much of the backyard as we can by shifting the garage over as much as we can. We believe we're going to minimize the impact to the lot. We're going to be able to tuck the garage right back into the trees and the shrub line. And we want to maintain a straight drive into the three bays of the garage instead of having to, if the garage was behind the house, so to speak, and further away from the lot, and you'd have to take a turn, which we think that would be awkward. Part of the proposal is, you'll see on the plans, and if you've seen, if you've been by the site or looked at overheads, there are some sheds that are out back. There's a tent shed and a little utility shed. Those are going to be gone, and we're replacing both of those with the garage. The height at the rear lot line, getting into the kind of the details of the variance, the ordinance requires that at ten feet back from the lot line, off the rear lot line, is a maximum of twelve feet. We're just going to be over that. You can see on the rendering of the garage, the door of the garage, the side door of the garage on the plans, the sill is at ten feet, right at the six-foot mark. And then if you come back an additional four feet, we're just going to be over the twelve-foot maximum height. Very little, but it was so close, we thought it was better safe than sorry to ask for that. But at the same time, coming off the side yard, or the side property line, we have a sixteen-foot peak of the roof, and so that sixteen feet is higher than the twelve is allowed, running all the way along the ridge of the garage. And so we're requesting that four-foot variance to allow, from a maximum of twelve up to sixteen feet, a four-foot difference. So those are the two height variances requesting. And the size, it's 25 by 40. It's a thousand square feet. According to the definition of accessory use, or rather, accessory structure, we're allowed forty percent of the size of the house. The house is 2,310 square feet, which would allow us a 924-square-foot garage. So we're, I just lost my mouth, we're seventy-six square feet over what's allowed under the definition of accessory structure. So we're allowed forty percent. We're at forty-three percent. We believe we're presenting just a nominal variance request on the size of the garage. In your packet, Mr. Chairman, again, members, we have two letters from you, or excuse me, for you. The Papadiases, the immediate neighbors at Four Chaucer, have seen the plans, and they have indicated they have no objection to the plans or the garage. Behind us is the Flatley-owned Properties, and you have a letter from Kevin Walker on behalf of Flatley Properties. You've seen Kevin Walker here, I'm sure. And again, likewise, they have no objection to the request being made. In addition, tonight, I had passed out an overhead of the area, and it looks like this, right? Should all have received that. Honestly, I'm not too good at the GIS thing, but what I'm trying to do there is just illustrate how much of a treed area we have around us. There's a large buffer behind us, a lot of trees, and so we really plan to maximize that, to have the garage tied as close to the tree line as possible, so the impact is minimized. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would speak to the variance criteria. You have our application. And speaking to the public interest, we're setting the garage as far back as possible. The requests we're making are nominal requests of the rear inside height issues, and then the size, the seventy-six square feet larger. We don't believe these will result in a change of the character of the neighborhood or any harm to any public rights, health, or safety. As to the spirit of the ordinance, again, the location of the garage, we're trying to observe the spirit of the ordinance by keeping this use incidental, subordinate, and behind the house as much as possible. And likewise, we don't see any impact to the neighborhood or public health or safety or welfare. We believe we have substantial justice being done with this request because this will be a great benefit to Ms. Boden and Mr. Bolduc, while at the same time, little to no impact or harm to the neighborhood or any public rights. Again, you have the letters from the two neighbors, the two abudders who are most impacted, and they have no objection. For the same reason, we don't believe we have any impact to the surrounding property values. This will be quality construction. Mr. Bolduc is in the construction industry, and this will be, the doors will be closed most times, so clawboard siding, just typical standalone garage. We don't see any adverse impact to any property values. And finally, Mr. Chairman, we have two factors with respect to the hardship. You have the reasonable test and the relationship test. Garages are a common feature of this neighborhood and throughout Nashua. We think we have a reasonable proposed use of the property. And given the way we have located and tried to minimize the impact, we don't think there's any fair and reasonable relationship between prohibiting the use and what's being proposed. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Mancara?
So a couple of questions. So first, did you look at scenarios, or did your clients look at scenarios for locating the garage where you were able to meet the requirements, at least in terms of the height with regard to the setback? And related to that, what is the need for the three-car garage? Two-car garages seem to be the most common in the neighborhood. So seemed, looking at this, I'm feeling as though at least some of the relief would not be required if you went with a two-car garage versus a three-car garage, if you could speak to those.
Well, okay, let me, I'll take that second point, second. We did look at a number of alternatives. To be honest, when I first got involved with this thing, the proposal was to have this structure at four feet, so I would be requesting an encroachment into the setback. And I said, no, that doesn't make sense. We can make this work. As to the side height issue, we want to keep the garage where it is because, again, it tucks in right to the back corner of the property so they can minimize the, excuse me, they can maximize the use of the backyard and minimize any impact on the backyard. Frankly, Jay, we could probably move the garage forward maybe two or three feet toward the front, so we'd be eliminating the rear height variance request. I mean, we could do that, and I really think it's a matter of feet. Again, we wanted to put it back there just to maximize the use of the yard, but if we were to move that forward to the front of the lot, two feet, it would eliminate that rear height variance request. All right. The three-bay garage is what the folks, Ms. Boden and Mr. Bolduc desire. They are storing cars. In addition, they're removing the two sheds that they have on the site, so it's just storage for the family. But we would certainly agree to that. And I was talking with the engineer, and he said, you know, if you move the garage forward two feet, you would eliminate that rear variance thing, and we would agree to that.
Just have one question for Mr. Fark. What is the side and rear setback in this zone?
Well, for an accessory structure, it's six feet.
Six feet. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Lionel?
Well, building on Mr. Mancara's question, if it was built as a more typical two-bay garage, it could be moved four feet away from the lot line, and there wouldn't be any need for a variance request at all. So I'm, the fact that they want a three-bay garage seems to be what's creating the need for variances.
Well, that's true, but keep in mind that the request for the variance is for seventy-six square feet above what's allowed, and...
Not concerned about the area variance. It's the height variance.
The, well, all I can tell you is that by removing the two sheds that they have there today, plus vehicles that they want to store in the garage, adds up to a three-bay garage. That's their desire. That's their request of the board. We certainly, you know, could have proposed a two-bay garage, but this is what the applicant wants to do with this site. And again, you know, there are trees, shrubs in there. The neighbor is not opposed, so that's why you see the application before you.
What's up? Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application?
It's just the letters.
Okay, I'll, let me...
Before you close it out, can I have one second with my clients?
All right, so I'm going to read these letters into the record. All right. All right, so we have two letters, right? Two letters. Yeah, there's three. First one is, "Dear Mr. Fark, we have the neighbors to Linda Boden and Roger Bolduc at Two Chaucer Road. We have reviewed their garage plan. We understand that they will be asking for variance for their garage. We have no objections to their plans, proposed garage." That's Sandra Papadias and Gregory Papadias at Four Chaucer Road. We also have another communication, another letter here. "Dear Mr. Fark, we are sending this email at the request of our neighbors at Two Chaucer Road, Linda Boden and Roger Bolduc. We have reviewed their garage plan. We understand that they will be asking for variances for the garage. We have no objections to their plans or the proposed garage. Thank you." Gregory W. and Sandra, I have to say it was the same one. Okay. And then we have one other letter here. "Good morning, Mr. Fark. I reviewed the plan for the above-referenced parcel and would like to convey to the board that John Flatley Company has no objection to this request. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call or email me. Thank you." Mr. Kevin Walker, professional in the air for John Flatley Company.
Mr. Chairman, we're all set. Thank you very much.
Okay. Does anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anybody with opposition, questions or concerns with the application? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel?
From my perspective, I have a really hard time getting there with this one, for a couple of reasons. First, I just don't see or really have heard anything about special conditions in the property. This lot seems to be pretty much a regular lot, like anything, like any other lot in the area. It's not unusual in shape. I haven't heard testimony about steep slopes. It appears that, you know, I think we commonly see requests for garage coming before us, which I think is a reasonable customary use, but it's hard for me to find that a three-bay garage is a typical customary use, and in looking at the surrounding area, it is uncommon. I could totally, you know, that's something I could see. I guess, to the end of the day, when I look at this, I think, you know, the applicants could readily design a garage that actually meets the requirements on this lot. There's nothing that prohibits it, other than a desire to move it further back. There's a desire to have a larger garage, but a garage at seventy-six square feet less would comply with the accessory requirement. I think that's easily accomplished, and I think you can easily move this garage forward or make it smaller so that it would comply with the height requirements. So I just, I'm not seeing anything especially unique about the property that gets me there.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
I, like Mr. Mancara, we see lots of requests for garages, and when there is unusual topography or placement of the house on the property or the lot shape, that sometimes creates a need for variance. But here, it almost seems to have been manufactured, that a reasonable garage could be, meet all of the requirements of the code. You know, it doesn't have to be as big as it is. It could even still be three bays, but be a little bit smaller. It could be moved just a couple of feet in the two directions, and there would be no need for a variance. So although, you know, I don't have a problem with having a garage there, if I'm looking at the requirements necessary to agree to a variance, I'm not seeing that it qualifies.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Thank you. I guess I'm going to agree to disagree. Three-car garage, understanding that the homeowner needs a place to put tools. They're removing two sheds. It seems logical. It would seem necessary and prudent, especially with our weather. Also, in his line of work, if he is a contractor, as I think Mr. Pearlman referred, then he would have more tools than the general homeowner would have, and he'd want to maybe keep some tools there. I don't have a problem with the height. It seems that it's these two little peaks that bring it to that height, so there's space, there's the eye sees through that, so it's not a solid four feet. It's just two peaks, which would then necessitate this reason. Seventy-six square feet doesn't seem to bother anyone, but for me, the, having, knowing someone who added that third garage because they needed it for basically the same reasons, I just understand the logic behind the need, and I am in favor and find support for this application.
If I may, the coupleas on the roof are not the issue. If you look at the drawing...
They aren't?
The peak of the roof is sixteen, but they're far enough away from the lot line...
I get it.
That they're not an issue.
It still doesn't alter my opinion, but thanks for the clarification.
So as I looked at this case also, there, you know, I was wondering why, or, you know, why we couldn't put the three-car garage in a different location. So as the applicant stated, two feet, moving the garage two feet away from the rear property line would eliminate that aspect. And I'm sure that if we moved the garage two feet off the side property line and put a different design roof on that garage, like a hip roof type, we would achieve the same type of a thing. But I'm not here to design their garage, so this is what they're requesting. So in essence, I think, again, I look at, what I look at this property is where the placement of the garage is. And this is where I probably am in agreement with the applicant in that respect, is that this garage is tucked in the back right corner of the garage. I look at the neighborhood and where all the other homes are situated. They're all in line up front. Their rear property, right now, there's, you know, there's no impact really on the rear property owner. We have a letter from the most affected neighbor, who is in support of this. I also, you know, viewed the property, and, you know, I do see that it's, you know, the vegetation is, you know, it's not like it's all clear, you know, it is there. So, and I look at the design, or I look at the garage and the way the peak is, and I said, well, I couldn't make that work by changing the peak on the side, but aesthetically, again, now I'm saying, okay, well, I'm doing something that, or maybe somebody would do something to try to get the garage right at that six-foot line. So then I look at what the impact is, and I guess I don't see enough there for me to not be in favor of the application or be in favor of the garage where it's located. And again, to me, what's impacting me or what I'm looking at is the location and what's around it, what's surrounding it, if you follow what I'm saying. So I know that the garage could be moved a couple of feet off the back to achieve that. I think they have offered that. I don't think that that's, if I'm listening to the conversation, I don't think that that's really the, well, that's the least impactful, right? You know, the more impactful would be that sidewall on the right side of the garage as we're facing the property. I would look at it as that would be the most impactful to the view, but then if I'm looking straight onto the garage, and I'm looking from the street, and in fact, you know, one did move the garage two feet over and put a hip roof on it, I don't know if I would say, boy, that really looks a lot better or is more clear for me. So, so the three-car garage, I'm not, I'm not really hung up on that third bay. That's kind of what the owner wants. And that third bay, however you look at it, to me is, you know, can be achieved with or without the variances here, right? But I'm looking at more of... But I'm looking at more of how is this going to look or how is this placed on the property? And I think that it's, it, it's, to me, it reasonable to have this tucked in the back corner, you know, to the set, setback, side setback, rear setback. And I think it's, it's, um, the, the variances that they're looking for, I think, don't, for me, don't, don't have such a big impact on, uh, what I would think would be the most impactful would be to, to the neighbors or, or to the, to the look of the neighborhood. So that's my opinion.
I actually echo my colleagues. I'm in favor of the application.
Is there any more discussion? All right, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for Linda Bodewine, Two Chaucer Road. Description is Linda Bodewine, owner, Two Chaucer Road, Sheet B, Lot sixteen fifteen, requesting the following variances. One from the Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash two sixty-four, to exceed maximum accessory use area, forty percent permitted, forty-three percent proposed. And two, from the Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash thirty-one, subsection A, subsection one, to exceed maximum height of an accessory structure within ten feet of the side and rear property lines, twelve feet permitted. Sixteen feet maximum is what the applicant has changed this to. Both requesting a constructed twenty-five by forty-foot detached garage in IRA eighteen zone. We find that the variances needed, needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Those in favor of this application, um, have looked at the placement of, of the garage, um, the, the perceived or non-perceived impact on, on the butter and the area and its, um, aesthetics within, um, the neighborhood and, um, that, um, this garage would not impact, um, property values or, or such. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than a variance. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest. There's substantial justice would be served. Second by Ms. McKay. All those in favor? That's three, Boucher, McKay and Morris. All those, uh, that are not in favor would be Lino and Mancarney. I did not ask if there was any discussion. Was there any need for discussion on the motion? Okay. All right, so that motion passes. Congratulations and again, you're aware of the thirty day window of appeal. Okay, thank you. With that, I will close case number two and close the public meeting for case number two. We're going to be hearing case number, um, number three. The applicant for case number one is, is not here yet, but will be expected any minute. Call case number three.
Are we not doing number, case number one?
Uh, the applicant's not here yet. We're gonna, we're gonna hold.
Supposedly running a few minutes late and we'll just...
We, we were notified, so we're gonna accommodate that. Is, um, I know we usually sometimes have discussions, but I, I thought it would be all right. I, is there?
No problem. It just, we had earlier said that we were going to switch one and two and nobody said anything different, so I was just puzzled.
We'll wait till the applicant shows up, then we'll put, we'll, we'll clear that case next available slot.
Make them, put them at the end.
So we're gonna be hearing case number three now. The owner is Elizabeth Colbrook, six thirty-two South Main Street. Description is Elizabeth Colbrook, owner of six thirty-two South Main Street, Sheet A, Lot two seventy-one, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash sixteen, Table sixteen dash three. One, to encroach eight point one feet into the twenty-five foot required front yard setback and two, to encroach one point nine feet into the ten foot required yard setback. Both requesting a construct and attach twenty-four by thirty-foot garage. That's in the IRA zone. Welcome, give us your name and address, sir, and feel free to pull that down.
Good evening, Mr. Boucher, members. My name is Larkin Colbrook. Elizabeth is my sister. We share the residence at six thirty-two South Main. She travels extensively. I live there mainly with my wife and daughter and we'd like to construct this garage so she can keep her vehicle out of the weather and I'm disabled as you see. It would make it a lot easier for me to come and go and to get, we're on a kind of corner if you viewed the property and it kind of works to get two cars in there. I apologize if I'm kind of unprepared.
That's fine. The application, the, the drawings are here and it's, um, it's quite self-explanatory. And again, um, just so you, you stated, I think what you're saying is that the property is not a typical square or rectangle type property. You have, um, you have a, you know, you're at an intersection with a curve and then the house also is situated in a, in a diagonal manner to the property and, um, you know, the house right now, um, is maxed out on the front setbacks. So, um, so again, just, um, I'll ask you a few questions. So the garage that you're proposing, um, were, were there any other alternatives or could there have been any alternatives on this property to put a garage other than, I guess, maybe trying to fit a single car garage on that?
I don't believe so. We looked at it pretty heavily. If we moved it back any further, it'd kind of impede the living area and the back portion of the house.
Yeah.
And I, and I think it'd, um, encroach on the back corner of there, distances also.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and then, right, and then you have a pool on one side of the house, right?
Yeah.
There's a justing there. And then, um, from what I obs- observe, but you can let me know, so veterans drive, um, what I observe over there and I, I use that sometimes just to go around.
I've been driving different.
Most of the traffic is veterans drive, you know, to South Main Street going towards the college. Your end of the, the leg is only people who live on Clearmore are going to use that.
Yeah, or the Armory.
Or the Armory, right? So traffic is not, not the same as it would be on the rest of South Main Street.
A fraction.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Mancarney?
Um, the depth of thirty feet, could you speak to the reason, the, the need for it to be quite that deep?
I drive a big car and, well, and I'll be staying in a big vehicle hopefully and we're getting, we'll, we'll be removing the shed in the backyard so it'll be room for my tractor, my snow blower, also eliminating me having to go out to the backyard to get it for yard work and whatnot.
Thank you.
Anybody else with questions for the applicant? None? All right, thank you. We may have you back up.
No problem. Thank you.
Anybody, um, that would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, seeing none. Anybody with, with opposition, questions or concern regarding this application? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I never, you know, I always drive by there and I know there's a house there, but I never really looked at it hard till this application came in and, um, as I looked at the overview, I said, boy, that's a heck of a way to have put a house on that lot, you know? I mean, again, nothing wrong with the house, it's just kind of, kind of the way it was and, and I'm sure it was placed that way for maybe a view or, you know, so, um, Mr. Mancarney, I, I think you brought up a good point and, and I thought about the same thing, the depth, right? And then I, then I realized as I drove around the property, I'm like, there must be storing something in there and, um, I did see the gentleman's vehicle parked there, so I know, um, I know that when I had dealt with new construction in previous travels I had, I was always amazed at how shallow the new garages are and I'd say, I had a truck at that time, I said, no way I'm fitting a truck in there or, or a large car, but, so I understand, I guess I can appreciate the depth of garage. So, um, and then when we're talking about the depth, I think that, um, you know, I'm not, I, I know that we're, we're, we're just impinging on the back corner a little bit of, of kind of like that side, side yard on South Main Street, we're impinging a little bit. I think really the, 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 the thing that I was looking at is really the front corner, front right corner of the garage, um, how it sits. But again, I, I think the, the lot is very uniquely shaped, um, so, so I, uh, you know, and then looking at really kind of what happens there. So I was looking at, hey, um, you know, is there really any issues with traffic or, or any problems with, you know, doing this and will people already live there and, you know, having the garage, I don't think is going to create anything more than what's going on in that corner. So, um, so with that, unless, unless I, you know, kind of hear any from my fellow members, you know, I, I think I'm, I, I would be, you know, in favor of this application. So, Mr. Lino.
Unlike the, the previous case, the, this, this case has an unusually shaped lot. It's a corner lot, unusual placement of the house and the proposed garage is, is not out of character for the, for the neighborhood. I don't have any objections to this request.
And I would agree. I, I think overall, although it, it is deep, making it, uh, reducing the depth wouldn't eliminate the need for the setback variance. Two car garage, I think is reasonable, normal customary, certainly in this area, elsewhere in the city. Uh, so I, I support the application.
Anybody else?
I too support the application and the depth. I understand my son had to add to his garage to get his truck in, so I get that.
Ms. Boris.
I'm also in favor of the applicant.
Okay. Anybody would like to make a motion?
Gee, why don't you do it?
All right, all right. Let me get to the right one. Um, I, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve the variance request of Elizabeth Colbrook for six thirty-two South Main Street. Sheet A, Lot two seventy-one, requesting the, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code, Section one ninety sixteen, Table sixteen three, one, to encroach eight point one feet into the twenty-five foot required front yard setback and two, to encroach one point nine feet into the ten foot required side yard setback. I have both these requests for to construct and attach twenty by thirty, uh, garage in, I'm sorry, twenty-four by thirty, uh, garage in the IRA zone. And, uh, the reasons for granting the variance, uh, the variance is, uh, as I said, the, the board has found that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, uh, given the special conditions of the property, which were the unusual shape of the lot and the, uh, unusual placement of the house, uh, within the lot. Uh, the, the benefit sought by the applicant can't be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance, as we found that it would, or a two car garage is, is reasonable and customary, uh, within the area and within the city and it really is not possible to construct one, uh, without seeking relief from setback requirements. Uh, we found that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, uh, will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels, like there was no testimony from any abutters, uh, as to adverse impacts. We found that it's not contrary to the public interest and the substantial justice would be done.
Anybody want to second that? Mr. Lino, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, sir. Your motion passes. With that, I'll, uh, close the public meeting for case number three and we will go now to case number one. So I will, um, open the public hearing for case number one. The owner is Western Associates Development Company, five forty-six Amherst Street. The description is Western Associates Development Company Incorporated, owner, five forty-six Amherst Street, Sheet H, Lot one seventy-nine, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code, Section one ninety dash one fifteen, subsection B, to work within the forty-foot critical wetland buffer of Round Pond to remove existing building and construct a two new buildings. It's in the general business park industrial zone.
Thank you.
Welcome, attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at twenty Trafalgar Square in Nashua. I'm here this evening seeking a special exception for land located at five forty-six, uh, Amherst Street. Um, you may, the plan that runs the law, that are on the board show the two buildings that are being proposed. There is one building there presently, it's Southern New Hampshire University, that's right here on the corner. What we're trying to do is we're going to knock that building down, put the two new buildings up and align the driveway with the traffic light that's here. There's a traffic light, so we align it, so it makes it, um, for traffic purposes, a better use. Again, this is for a special, special exception. I'm here with our engineer, Chris Rice, this evening, if you have any questions that I can't answer. This is a special exception and the use is listed as a special exception in the use matrix. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Fact is, what we're proposing, I will submit to you, is going to help the traffic in that particular area. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer systems. There was a present building that was existing that had quite a few students and so forth, um, and which we should, uh, use less than what was being used with that building with commercial retail buildings in that particular area. There are special exceptions, uh, special regulations, they've been attached to the application and they've been answered, uh, all nine of them that apply to this and, uh, I refer that they be accepted, um, as attached without reading.
So, so just for the record, you were talking about the wetland special conditions?
Yes, the nine special conditions.
And you're testing that you meet all those criteria.
Right. Um, the requested use will not impair the integrity, it'll be out of character with the district. There are other, um, commercial buildings in the area, retail buildings in that particular area. Uh, the Conservation Commission gave approval with conditions on August seventh, two thousand nineteen. In their letter, we will agree with the conditions that they have imposed, they would like to see imposed on this site. If you have any other questions, I'd be...
Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns or opposition to the application? Come on up, sir. Give us your name and address.
Hello, board. My name's James Maddock of One Sandstone Drive. I'm here on a separate Boy Scout thing, but I have a concern for, uh, traffic.
Just address us and we'll get an answer for you.
Gotcha. Uh, traffic on Amherst Street, cause it gets quite crowded there and I'm wondering if the light now has a left turn with only two lanes. Uh, it might cause more traffic than you expected, especially around rush hour times when Amherst Street gets clogged up a lot. So that was a major concern for me. Um, I, I don't know if I want to recommend any resolutions for, for what they could do about that, but just the two lanes really, uh, nag me, cause as I'm going down Amherst Street and, you know, I gotta wait like thirty, fifteen, fifteen extra minutes just cause all this traffic and then I suppose if you make one lane for a left turn into the, uh, lot here and then one lane to keep going, then you would have to close, I don't know, people have to merge into the right lane or something. I don't really know, but that's a big concern and just wanted to, have you guys address that?
Right, so we'll, uh, number one is, if you could have your name again for the, for the record?
Uh, James Maddock.
James?
Yes.
And spell your last name, please?
M-A-D-D-O-C-K.
M-A-D-D-O-C-K. Oh, I'm sorry.
Then we're gonna have, um, the, uh, attorney, the applicant will come back and answer these questions, okay? Um, is there any other questions that you have?
That's all.
Yeah, hold on. Is there any questions for, for this gentleman? Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience with questions, concerns or opposition? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Attorney Prunier, if you want to come back and, you have five... Mr. Attorney Pro, uh, Attorney Puna, if you want to come back, and you have five minutes?
First of all, I'd like to state that traffic is really not within the jurisdiction of this, it's within the planning board, and we have, but, uh, the young gentleman came this evening, would like to answer his questions, but I can't, so I'll ask our engineer to come and, and try to explain the traffic and tell, and explain the conditions.
Good evening, my name is, uh, Chris Rice with TF Moran. Um, I'm not sure if I should address this directly to the board, okay? Uh, so I'm just not sure if there's some potential confusion about what's being proposed. Right now, the, the existing site has two curb cuts, uh, the one right here, which is right in, right out, and there's another one right here, existing, which is also right in, right out. And what we're trying to accomplish is to get traffic, right now, anybody who's exiting this site, as well as the business to the, to the south, if anybody wants to head to the west, they have to take a right out of the site, and then somewhere down the road, they have to make a U-turn, or pull into another business, and then make a right to then head this direction. And so what we're trying to accomplish is to take our driveway and line it up with the existing signal that's at Blackstone Drive, so that if somebody wanted to take a left, they don't have to take a right and go make a U-turn. So we, we feel like this will be an improvement overall to the traffic situation out on the property.
So I know this is not part of the purview of what we're doing, we can explain why, but, um, just real quick, I think, um, the gentleman also, maybe, I'm mistaken, but taking a left-hand turn when you're going west, going towards, so the pond will be on your left, you're going to the property, when you, the, the lefts that used to turn into southern, the, the Southern New Hampshire?
Oh, the left to get into the site?
Is there gonna be a left-hand turn?
Oh, there is, yes, I apologize, and I didn't understand. There is a small left-hand turn pocket here, so that people
Okay.
Could slip into there in two-way traffic.
Because before that, there is no opportunity, and when it's really busy, you're, you're taking a chance crossing.
I apologize, I misunderstood.
Okay, real good. Okay, thank you.
Can I answer your question?
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else, Attorney Pro, uh, anything else? I mean, sorry, Attorney Puna, I got your big stuff. Okay, are you all set?
Yeah.
All right, I just wanted to make sure you had your five minutes. Okay. Um, Ms. Maddock, you, you have an opportunity to come back if you'd like to speak, um, any, any issues or questions you have? You can come back to the mic if you'd like, if not, you can rest.
No, thank you.
Okay, all righty. Okay. With that, I will close the, uh, public hearing and open the public meeting. Again, I think we're, we're here, obviously, to, um, it's a, it's a wetland buffer, and I think sometimes, um, you know, um, as, right. So, we're here for the wetland buffer, they're actually, you know, again, we're removing, they're removing pavement, um, which is, which is a gain there. Um, I think they're taking all the precautions, um, they met with the CONCON, um, they are following their guidelines. Um, I would suggest to the gentleman in front that came up, that, um, that this has to go to the planning board next, and, um, that would probably be also a good place to go and express your concerns or opinions. But our purview for this board is really strictly looking at, um, the wetlands incursion, so, um, that's all we can really take into account at this point, but feel free to go to the planning board phase of this project, okay? So with that, I, um, I'm in favor of the application. Um, I think they meet all the criteria. Um, I, you know, again, I, I don't see anything that's glaringly out, and I think, again, um, the project as a whole, I think is going to be a, a good thing, and I think it'll be a win-win with the extra, you know, the extra work done to get people out of that project going west. Mr. Lino.
I'm in support of the project.
Ms. McCarran?
I, I would agree for the reasons stated, and, and just add, that I, I think this design allows for better overall utilization of the site, and, uh, I think the impacts are minimal and, and necessary to achieve that design.
All right. Ms. McCarran?
I concur.
Ms. Boris?
I'm also in favor.
Okay. Anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lino.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner of Western Associates Development Company, address, uh, it's 546 Amherst Street, Sheet H, Lot 179, requesting special exception from Land Use Code Section 190 dash 115B, to work within the 40-foot critical wetland buffer of Round Pond, to remove existing buildings and construct two new buildings. This is in the GB and PI zoning district. Uh, this is a special exception being requested, it is listed in the table of uses. Um, the, uh, they went before the Conservation Commission and got approval with recommendations, which the applicant says they are going to follow. Uh, the board believes it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Uh, the board finds that this will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal systems. Uh, the project appears to actually improve the, uh, the drainage on the site. All of the special regulations are fulfilled by testimony of the applicant, and the work will not impair integrity, or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals of, or welfare of residents, so I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Seconded by Mr. McCarran, um, just for discussion and not need to, to say anything, you already covered it, but I just want to be specific on a special condition, that it's the August 7th CONCON meeting, the, the favorable recommendations with the four stipulations that you mentioned, I just want to put the date out there, in case there was any discrepancies in the future, okay?
Yeah, very good.
All right. You see, um, you agree with that, Mr. McCarran?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, with that, all those in favor of the application?
Do we, do we get a second?
Oh, second was Mr. McCarran.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
So all those in favor? It's five to nothing. Congratulations, sir. Thank you. With that, I'll, with that, I'll close the public meeting for case number one, and we'll open the public hearing for case number four, and I'll let, Mr. Attorney Puna move out. Case number four, it's Laurie J. Kopka, 5 Lind Street, Laurie J. Kopka, owner, 5 Lind Street, Sheet 65, Lot 54, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 1A dash 16, Table 16 dash 3, to encroach four feet into the 10-foot required right yard setback, to construct 12 by 18 three-season porch. It's in the RA district. Welcome, give us your name and address, please.
Laurie Kopka, 5 Lind Street in Nashua. Um, I guess you have the packet, but.
So we have, we have your application, we have your pictures that you sent in, and, um, if you're not sure where to start, just tell us what you want to do, or what's, what's happening.
Um, I'm asking for a variance, um, to be able to encroach, um, into the side setback for four, four feet, to build a three-season porch in the rear. Um, it's a very small lot, it's 50 by 100, so it's 100 deep and 50 narrow. Um, and there's two other lots within that block that's the, that are the same, um, the 100 by 50. Um, most of the, the properties there, in the neighborhood, um, have three, three-season porches, or some kind of a porch. I don't think it's an unreasonable request for that, but, um, the, the, um, everyone else's lot, um, their, their buildings, whether it's their, their house, or their sheds, or their porch, or whatever, they all encroach within the setbacks. Um, I don't know, do you have, do you have this?
Yes, we do.
This one? Okay. If you, they all encroach on the setbacks. So, um, I'm just asking for, to encroach the four feet, um, to allow for a window, so that I can see, um, down the sideline of the, side, side of the yard to the front of the street. Um, also, in one of the pictures that I gave you, I, you could see the side of, the back of the house, where the, the second floor window is. Um, the roof has to come below the window, it can't come across the window. Um, if I can see. It's this picture?
Yeah, the one with the slider?
Yeah.
Right.
Shows the back of the house, so the, the roof would have to come down below that window on that side, and the, um, roof would be up, up here, so it, it kind of makes it so that you have to have the angle like that, and if it was shorter on this side, it wouldn't look right. You'd have, the, the pitches would, pitch of the roof would be different on one side I don't know, if you have any other questions for me?
So, how did we get here?
How did what?
How did we get here? Because obviously, the something was already started. Construction was already started, so, so, what I'm asking is, how did we get to this point? I guess we're, you know, you're in front of us, um, was, did somebody come from the city and, and, did you, um, did you have somebody come and start building it, didn't know you needed a permit, or an application for?
No, um, my contractor, um, didn't apply for a building permit, and I talked to him about that, and he was going to go down to, to get a building permit, and when he did that, they, they found out that I needed to get a variance for the four-foot si, setback. So everything stopped at that point.
Yeah, so he already started before he had gone to get the permit?
Right.
Okay, all right. So, all right, I just, I was just curious how we got here, that's all.
Okay.
All right.
So, it, yeah, I think one of the other pictures shows the, um, the side of the, the window. Yeah.
Yeah, and again, so, so, the reason why, um, again, I, I know that a lot of the homes, you know, sometimes are pre, predate zoning and stuff, but one of your challenges are is, in here, why you would, why it's been designed this way, it's because of that, that window, right?
It's because of the window, and also the roof line.
Right, the roof line, right. Yeah.
Because otherwise, it would be like longer on one side and shorter on the other, and that's for your porch, it just, I don't know, it just wouldn't look right.
Okay.
Um, I think, building the porch would, um, wouldn't take away any, um, anything character from the neighborhood at all. Everyone else has porches, um, and I think it would add, um, property values as well.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, I don't know, do you have any other questions?
We'll, we'll find out right now. Is there any questions for the applicant? None? You can have a seat for now.
Okay.
We may have you back up. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Come on up, give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is George Levitsky, that's L-E-V as in Victor, I-T-S-K-Y. I reside also at 5 Lind Street in Nashua. I wanted to mention, uh, as far as Laurie already has, that the lot at 5 Lind is a smaller lot than a lot of the lots that surround her on that block. The house in stature is also smaller than most of the houses in that block. Uh, looking at the property from the street on the left, the garages to the properties on the left come to, I believe, within one or two feet from the boundary of her property. Now, on the other side, which is where the four feet would come out towards the 10-foot to the other side of the property, that leaves six feet. Now, we've got six feet on that side where the addition is going to go into, and we've got one or two feet on that side on the property lines. The house is smaller than the rest of the properties. Adding on to that house would do nothing but increase the value, make the house stature larger to be more of the same size of the surrounding buildings. It would leave five feet, I'm sorry, that's 10, they would leave six feet, which is five feet more, say, on the right-hand side, where we're going to put the addition, than she's got with the one foot from the garages on the other side. So, if you want to look at it for anything, and cringing on anything, it would be the properties to the left with the garages, that, garages that are already there, that are almost up to the line. We're leaving six feet on the other side, so it's not even coming close in that respect to us adding, or taking away four feet in that area of the 10-feet. So to look at it straight on, there's still a lot more room on this side, even with the addition added on to the side of the house, than there is to the property line, with the garages coming over from the other properties. And like I said, the, the whole house, stature of the house, the width, the length, and, and the height of it is much smaller than the surrounding structures. So it's not going to do anything but help to build it up to make it look like, a little bit more like the size of the ones that are around it. I find no problem with it.
All right. Any questions for this gentleman? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, seeing none. Uh, ma'am, hold on, you'll have, uh, we have to follow the rules, so let me just go through this for a minute, then I can explain you what, what, what we're doing here. Um, anybody, is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, we had, uh, one letter, um, and I'll read that into the record. It is from, um, Jeffrey Wi, uh, Jeffrey Weiner of 11 Rockland Street. Um, "I will not be able to attend the hearing, I will be recovering from surgery. Has anyone from the city looked at the backyard or property under question? The structure that is requested was started before the variance approval process. So was the project being done on the, the sly. Any certified contractor wouldn't have gotten the proper paperwork done before construction started, and I worry about how the electrical work, that will be done, will it be inspected? Another concern, and why I ask if the city has looked at the properties, because there are already two structures in the backyard. Have any of these structures been reported to the city and been approved by the city? If the porch is added, it will be very close to the other two structures. If a fire starts in any of them, I will quickly spread to others. So has the fire department approved the existing and proposed construction for safety, respectfully, Jeffrey, Jeff Weiner?" So that was a letter in opposition. Again, I'll just ask if there's anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, seeing none.
I can answer a question.
Okay, so, um, ma'am, you will have an opportunity to come back up, but, uh, Mr. Fock is just going to answer some of these issues in that letter.
Well, the, the questions of the other structures in the backyard, there was a, a permit for a deck in 2009, there was a permit for a 10 by 14 shed in 2008, and there was a permit for an 8 by 10 shed in 1996. There were also permits to put a dorm around the house, and there's also a permit for the house to be reconstructed, there was a fire. So, it looks like they've gotten all the, you know, permits in the past that the neighbor asked about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fock. So ma'am, you have five minutes, come up, because it was opposition, you have five minutes to come on back up if you want to speak to anything that you'd like? So just your name and address again for the record.
Laurie Kopka, 5 Lind Street. Um, I just, um, forgot to mention earlier that, um, I did speak with, um, some of my neighbors, and, um, one could not be here, because they had a school commitment, but they are not opposed to, um, me building the, um, the three-season porch, um, and they're one of the ones that has the garage, like, right against the property. And the one that's opposed also has his garage against the property, um, and his side yard, or his house is actually on the property line of the neighbor, so, um, but, there's not really going to be much electricity in there with, um...
I, I think now, I think the point is, and Mr. Fock will verify this, now that there's a permit, there will be inspections, so
Oh, yeah.
There will be nothing done that will be detrimental to, it's going to be out up the code, so we, we know that, that's going to happen.
Okay.
So we, I don't think we, we have any, any concerns about that.
Okay.
I do have one question
Yes.
For the applicant. Um, just a, a point of, of confusion, in the, uh, in the city map of the layout of your property, there are two sheds in the back. In the drawing that you supplied, there's only, you only have one. Is that second shed, uh, still there, or going to be removed?
Um, no, there's two sheds there, there, um...
I just missed putting that other shed in there.
Yeah, it, well, it was on the, yeah, it was on the other plan, so I don't know, it just didn't.
Was on, on the, um, overview plan, the city plan?
Yeah.
I was just curious. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Any other questions for the applicant? One sec. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Go ahead.
I, I, I think the applicant addressed the criteria fairly well. The lot itself is small. It's clear that, from looking at the surrounding neighborhood, that this is an older neighborhood. A lot of this was, uh, you know, pre-zoning, but, but clearly many structures in the area don't meet the current setbacks, so I think what's proposed is reasonable. I, I did wonder, could it be scooted over a little bit more? I, I think the applicant addressed that with the location of the window. Clearly, something need, you know, is intended to be here, there is a slider, kind of to know where. It looks as though there had once been a deck or a porch there. The size, I, I think having a three season porch or a porch is certainly reasonable and customary for a single-family home, and the size is not unusually large. So, uh, overall, for all those reasons, I, I support the application.
All right, thank you. I also support the application for the reasons you've given. Anybody else?
I too support it, and this is my neighborhood. I, that, um, street, that property is small. I fully support this.
Ms. Lionel?
Yeah, I, I support it also, but my only concern was the fact that, that work had already started on it, but that's been explained, and this sort of thing does happen, so.
I, you know, and I, I, I think that, we, we found out that, I think that this applicant, or this owner, has pretty much done the right thing all along, and I think maybe just to, maybe, you know, again, contractor, for whatever reason, didn't do what maybe he said he was going to do.
A lot of contractors don't like to pull permits.
Yeah, so. Okay, anybody else? Does anybody want to make a motion? I'll make it. I'd like to make a motion, uh, to, make a motion for Lori J. Kopka, Five Lind Street. Sheet sixty-five, Lot fifty-four, requesting variance from land use code section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three to encroach four feet into the ten-foot required right yards, uh, right side yard. Setback to constructing twelve by eighteen three-season porch in our zone. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. The property is relatively small, predates zoning. We discussed that many of the properties are, are very close to property line or on the property line. They're, you know, the, the proposed, um, structure, the, the three season porch being constructed in this area because of some pre-existing construction of, of the house where the windows are, where the slider is. We find that the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find it would not be contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. With that, I make a motion to approve the area variance. Second by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? Are those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, the application's been approved. Okay, thank you, thanks for coming. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number four. We are going to take a five-minute break at this point.
Case number four.
...is what we would consider an essential part of the use, which is an outdoor area for the dogs to get outside and ultimately use the bathroom. The property is again located at One Hardy Road. The site is situated on the south side of Amherst Street, positioned between Amherst Terrace and Hardy Street. The property consists of about eleven thousand and fifty square feet, which is roughly a quarter of an acre. Property is surrounded by residential uses to the south. I'm just going to reference the plan here. Surrounded by residential uses to the south, which would be this parcel here, and then also to the, to the west, these two properties here are residential. We have a cemetery located on the north side of the property, on the other side of Amherst Street, and then this is a commercial restaurant situated here on the east side of the, of the parcel. The former use of the property was a chiropractor, professional office. There's three structures on the site, so the chiropractor's office occupied this building here, this yellow building here, which was situated along the southern boundary. There's some parking out in front of that structure for, for the, that particular use. Then we, working our way to the north, we have a, an existing carport, and then ultimately a single-family residential building on the site. What we're proposing to do is essentially occupy the one thousand one hundred and forty-four square foot commercial building with a dog daycare, and we're proposing an outdoor area for the dogs to occupy on the north side of that building, positioned essentially between the carport and the residential structure. We would maintain the carport structure and also maintain the existing residence as well. The site is currently fenced with a stockade fence along its southern boundary and western and northern boundary, and we would be looking to maintain that fencing. There is one break in the fence right now along Amherst Terrace that we would propose to close in, and then we would propose a, a stockade fence that would close off between the existing structures that would create a completely enclosed area for the dogs to utilize on the outside. The site improvements that we would be proposing for this project really consist of the fencing improvements. We would re-stripe the parking area in the front of the building. One parking space is required. We, for the proposed use per the land use ordinance, we are proposing two. So the site would satisfy all design criteria as it relates to the proposal for the property. We did submit, I guess just to touch on it, the section that we're seeking relief under is Section 19052, which is entitled Permanent Outdoor Storage Areas. And under Section A of this part, it states that outdoor display of retail goods, wares, and merchandise is a permitted accessory use in the GB, D1, D3, and HB districts if expressly permitted pursuant to a site plan. Although this is not necessarily an outdoor storage area, the interpretation that we've received from the staff is that we would still need relief because the dogs would be located outside at, during the business hours of operations. So our opinion initially was that this really wouldn't be applicable, but that's the, you know, that was the interpretation, so we are before you seeking relief accordingly. As such, we did submit a formal application, and we addressed the five criteria within our application, and I certainly can go forward and, and read those into the record if you'd like, Mr. Chairman, or answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Does any of the members need the, the written record, or what, are we satisfied with what we, we're all set with that?
Okay. So what, what I would just say is the, the use that we're proposing is permitted, and we would consider any, any pet services use is going to have a required outdoor area for the pets to utilize. Any veterinary clinic that we've done, any dog daycare, dog sitting, dog grooming, any of those businesses always has an area for the dogs to, to utilize outdoor space. So the fact that the use is permitted, we think is critical, and that, you know, this portion of the property that we're proposing is really an essential part of the use that's permitted in, in the, in this particular zone. So, thank you very much. If you don't want me to read those into the record, I-
I don't, it's not that I don't want you to, we're, we're saying that we've got it.
Okay.
If you feel that you want to read them in, then-
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate for me to address them, just for the record. So I guess, starting with number one, granting the required variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the proposed use, which is a dog daycare, which is classified as pet services, is allowed, and the requested variance is to allow for an outdoor area for dogs to utilize the outdoor space for bathroom reasons. Considering that the outdoor area is a necessary component of the permitted use, we do not believe that this variance request will be contrary to the public interest. The outdoor area will be completely enclosed with fencing and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. In fact, we'll be utilizing the existing fencing and keeping intact a lot of the, or all of the existing landscaping, which is, the site is substantially landscaped. So we won't be altering the essential character of the neighborhood, or, nor will we threaten the public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure the public rights. Moving on to number two, the proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance because the spirit of the ordinance will be observed as the outdoor space is a necessary component of the permitted use. The area will be, again, completely enclosed, utilizing the existing fencing, with some additional proposed fencing to complete and enclose, to completely enclose the area. Again, the use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure the public rights. Moving on to number three, substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting the variance because substantial justice will be done to the property owner by granting this variance, as it will allow for the sale and reuse of the existing improvements on the property. The variance will allow a permitted use to occupy the site and provide for a necessary component of the permitted use. The benefits to the owner or applicant will not be outweighed by any harm to the general public or other individuals. The proposed outdoor space will utilize existing fencing and will not change the character of the neighborhood. Number four, the proposed use will not diminish the values of surrounding properties because this, again, this proposal will allow for a permitted use to occupy the site and function appropriately. The, the property will not change visually, and the proposed fencing will control the outdoor pet area and provide privacy and security to the neighborhood. Given that this is a permitted use, and that the project will not alter the character of the neighborhood, we do not believe that this project will have any negative impacts on the surrounding property values. And then the last item, number five, special conditions exist that letter enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary, will result in unnecessary hardship. Again, to, to, just to restate it, the proposed use for the property is permitted in the zone as pet services, and providing an area on the property for the pets to get outside is an essential part of the permitted use. The subject property is fenced, and additional fencing will be installed to completely enclose the area, as we've depicted on the plans. The outdoor space in the fencing is a fair, is fair and reasonable for the city, neighbors in public, as well as the proposed business. To allow the use but not allow necessary components is not reasonable and presents special conditions of the property. And these, this restriction, if it was applied to the property by the ordinance, does not serve the purpose in a fair and, we do not believe serves the purpose in a fair and reasonable manner, and as such, we believe strict enforcement of this regulation would result in unnecessary hardship to our client. Mr. Chairman.
All set?
All set.
So just to clarify, it was an application, just want to clarify, the applicant has stated the number of employees, if he wanted two employees, right? And then the twenty-six, approximately twenty-six trips a day, I know there were some trips in there. So is that like the number of dogs that we expect to have? Is that like thirteen dogs or twenty-six dogs?
No, it's trips, so it includes the employees and the dogs. We're anticipating around ten.
Ten, ten dogs.
No, ten dogs in that area.
I also, assuming that when the dogs are out, there's somebody out there, right?
That's correct, and, and the way the business would operate is you typically let out two to three dogs at a time. You would not have, you know-
Ten dogs.
You know, all the dogs outside. So you kind of cycle them in and out as needed to give them their time in space outdoors.
Can you explain to me, in, in red was the outline of where you're proposing the fence to be. So first of all, you're occupying all the back building, right? And, and I know it's maybe not germane to the, to the, to the application, but what's going on with the front house?
That would be rented still.
Rented, okay.
Yeah, it'd still be a residence.
Right, so, just a back part. So, so the, the back of the building on Amherst Terrace there, there's that, you got that back property, this fence goes, this is that little jog there in the fence? See what I'm talking about, there's that little section that touches the back corner of the, of the building?
You're talking here?
I know, go down, no, down the other way, Amherst Terrace, right, right there. So why does the fence go all the way back there? It doesn't have to?
So the existing fence runs along the property line here, and there's a door on the back side of the building, so we're really just trying to capture the door-
Okay.
-so that we could utilize that as another way of accessing, you know, that fenced-in area. I guess it doesn't have to go right to the back corner. It could come in-
The other door.
-on that back side of the building some.
Yeah.
But in general, that-
Okay.
-we're trying to extend it along that side, just so that we had full access to the doors in that building.
And is there another access to that yard, or is it just through that back door, to the fenced area?
The-
That they would be using for the dogs?
This would be, I believe, the only door that would be used to access this area, because the door on the side here, I don't believe is inside the fenced-in area.
Right, correct. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Could you talk to what the surface treatment within the enclosed area would be? Is it just grass, or is there some sort of special treatment?
Yep, it would, it would be grass. So we would maintain, you know, the lawn area essentially through that, through that whole section. I do have some photos that I'd be happy to hand out. I don't know if everybody had a chance to, to view the property, but the fencing on the property is, you know, is relatively new. It's a, it's a very nice wood stockade fence, and there is a lot of nice landscaping on the outside of the fencing that would be maintained. So there's, you know, I think there's good, you know, it certainly meets the requirement from a planning standpoint of the, the type B buffering, which would, we would have to address if we were able to go before the planning board, you know, as far as the, the fencing and the, and the landscaping. But, yeah, that would be, that would be maintained as lawn area.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Did you say you, you have one packet there, or do you-
I do have a, just a packet of eight and a half by eleven photos I'd be happy to hand out.
Does anybody need to see those pictures? Okay.
Okay.
We're all set. Okay. Anybody else want any questions, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? All right, so we're going to come up one at a time, right? You're going to give us your name and address. Again, per the rules that I mentioned earlier, you each have five minutes apiece, so it'll be timed on the clock, just, just as a refresher, just to remind you. Feel free to, to use your time as, as you wish. If somebody did mention something that you're going to talk about, you can feel free to say, hey, I agree with that person, and get whatever else you want out, okay? So welcome, and just give us your name and address.
Okay, good evening. My name is Clayton Alexander, and my wife, Georgette, and I own and reside at One Amherst Terrace, which directly abuts behind the One Hardy Street location. So it takes good neighbors to make a good neighborhood. Unfortunately, the owner of One Hardy Street, Ms. David Lennox, has not been a good neighbor. There were numerous problems with Nashville Chiropractic. Due to this hearing, I've just discovered that in nineteen eighty-seven, variance was granted with a stipulation that it be limited to a single practitioner with two assistants, and parking limited to a paved area on the grounds with no further paving. This variance was knowingly and willfully violated by Lennox. Everything he told and promised this board when requesting the variance was never kept, and the problems only metastasized. For example, the business exceeded the allowed numbers of doctors and staff, parking overflowed onto Amherst Terrace. Lennox used to, used part of my property as an egress for his employees' cars. That's where the section of fence in the back is missing, he was using it as a driveway. Snow plowing by Lennox blocked neighbors' property access and created hazardous conditions. The violations were never addressed, despite several requests to Lennox himself, nor were they enforced by the city, despite numerous complaints from several neighbors to code enforcement and the police. The amount of parking, picking up and dropping off, and number of employees for the dog daycare are substantially similar to what was falsely claimed earlier by Lennox, and that turned into a total nightmare for the neighbors. And now Lennox is before this board again, asking for yet another variance, which, which threatens to be even more of a nuisance for the neighborhood. At least the previous problems only involved the chiropractic business. But now, the proposed dog daycare business and variance would be a radical change in the use of this location and present even more immediate problems and future concerns. I think it should be obvious to anyone that fencing off half of a three-lot property so that a large pack of dogs can run around during the business hours of seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, is detrimental to the quiet enjoyment of our homes, our property values, and the character of the neighborhood. I've looked at the website and Facebook page for Zumiez Canine Camp, which is Ms. Bird's business, which is currently located at Five Indiana Avenue in Nashua. The Facebook page has several videos of dogs in a fenced-off area in the backyard behind a residential house, similar to the one being proposed. These videos show several large unleashed dogs running wild around the yard, barking very loudly, biting at each other, and defecating. The fencing is cheap three-foot high plastic mesh that could easily be jumped by the dogs. Ms. Bird makes no effort to curb, quiet, or control the dogs. The titles of these videos by Ms. Bird use words and phrases such as "first thing in the morning," "serious romping around the yard," "morning and afternoon excitement," "hoot-nanny," "hooligans," "shenanigans." Clearly, the normal operation of her business involves a rowdy, uncontrolled pack of loud barking dogs running around outside. I would like to know if Zumiez is zoned to conduct business in its current residential area, which is much less dense than our neighborhood, and if there have been complaints from the neighbors or issues with the city. Why is she moving her location? I would also like to know what her future plans for her business are. While looking at the property, Ms. Bird told a neighbor that she was opening a pet grooming business. Now she says it's a dog daycare. Her website states that she hopes to open a shelter for abused dogs. How many dogs is she eventually planning to accommodate here? Looking at the ordinance, which was mentioned by, here before, the applicant requests the variance based on Land Use Code Section 19052, Permanent Outdoor Storage Areas. This is incorrect. The sexually, the section actually concerns permanent outdoor, outdoor display areas. Neither the letter nor the spirit of the ordinance supports the use of the proposed variance. 19052A states that, quote, "Outdoor display of retail goods, wares, and merchandise is a permitted accessory use in the GB, D1, D3, and HB districts if expressly permitted pursuant to a site plan." The Hardy Street location is zoned LB, which is not specified in the ordinance. LB zoning permits minimal pet services. But unlike, say, a dog grooming business, where dogs are serviced only indoors, keeping, keeping a large pack of barking dogs is hardly minimal, and it is highly doubtful that this would be permitted use under LB zoning.
Your, your time's up, so if you could wrap it up?
Oh, it is, okay. Um, I, you know, it, um, I, on this, the statute, this ordinance involves merchandise, the outdoor display of merchandise, like, you know, potted plants outside of the garden center, or Home Depot, or something like that. Dogs aren't merchandise, they bark, they bite, they poop, you know? And, and, and I think, you know, granting this variant, you know, uh, you know, keeping, keeping a large number of dogs outside is more like keeping livestock, you know? The city has stricter regulations for keeping a smaller number of urban chickens, you know, would opening a daycare for roosters be permitted under this ordinance? Common sense says that dogs aren't merchandise, and the scenario being proposed here is even contemplated by the ordinance. Granting this variance would in effect be rezoning the area by changing an ordinance meant to regulate outdoor display of merchandise into something that somehow, in some way, regulates an outdoor pen for animals. And one, one last thing-
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay, I, I want to say, but, just, just quickly, my, my property line directly abuts the rear fence, there's two, there's two feet on the other side of Amherst Terrace there. There's the setback provision of the ordinance, there's a twenty-foot setback that is not even addressed here. And obviously, this is a noise nuisance, and there's no way to ameliorate it.
Okay, so, so the, the applicant represents here, so they'll be up to answer these questions that you have. Just for clarification, Mr. Fark, the display, can you just explain real quickly the reasoning behind your decision to have this application, right this way?
Um-
With the display part.
Well, it wasn't-
How they interpret the display?
It was a, a staff determination that wasn't just me, but, you know, we have to classify this as something. That's the closest thing in our ordinance that describes an outdoor use of something that's going to be going on, on a continual basis while a business is being open. This section here states that there is display allowed in certain zones. It's not allowed in this zone, that's why there's a use variance to allow the outdoor display, whether it's goods, or wares, or merchandise, dogs. You know, we had to classify it as something, and this was the closest classification of something that we could do to have an outdoor display area. We also did this exact same determination at another dog daycare at West Holl Street, two seventeen West Holl Street, where the Sucey's Market was. You know, it's the same process, same application, same zoning district, and they also wanted the, the outdoor use outside. The indoor use of a daycare, or dog daycare, or a dog grooming is permitted use in the zoning district, but the ordinance doesn't really go over the outdoor portion of it.
And there are no, there's no out, outdoor animal pens with any of the businesses in the area? So this is a, you know, we're radically changing the character of the, of the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Anybody else to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Come on up, sir. We'll have you up, don't worry, plenty of time. So again, your name and address, and, and we'll reset the clock for you.
All right. This is Tim Taper from Seven Amherst Terrace, in the middle of the tiny block. This location has been a, a problem for this little community as long as I've been there, and the other older people who live very close, the four, the three other houses abutting these in that tiny area have chimed in as opposed to this as well. There's been a, a problem with parking from the previous business, we can't see how this is going to be any different. They're coming to our area, overstep their little footprint for a business, which we find very objectionable, and when it comes to the winter time, for them to accommodate all these additional traffic. They push the snow all over the place, up into our driveways and in our yards, so that they make their little tiny space bigger, instead of leaving and going to a place that has adequate parking. Having these people show up with all of these dogs turning it into an outdoor toilet and then walking them, I can't see where you could walk them anywhere else. And I've seen these dog care places elsewhere, people are outside walking the dogs on leashes, they exercise, they get them out. Well, where are you going to take them? Not going to take them down Amherst Street, they're going to walk around our little tiny block, and turn it into one big latrine. I can't see standing for this noise that's going to come out of this tiny place very close to us, and then put up with the smell. And what's more irritating than anything is the goddamn parking beyond their little space.
Sir, 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 I appreciate-
That's, I agree with the gentleman, and I go-
Hold on, sir, we, we just want to keep it civil, and, and I just don't want to use any words in vain.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So, so this is our feeling, very negative, have no support for it, can see no benefit, only problems, and we don't want to have any more of them. Bad enough. And this looks like just a continuation of what we've been putting up with up till now. The only break has been the fact that that business hasn't been a business for a short while. And we get a relief. We can actually pull our cars out of the driveway without hitting somebody that's parking in that tiny street that shouldn't be. It's very upsetting.
I, I can appreciate that. Thank you, thank you for coming. Any questions for the applicant? For the, for the, for the gentleman? Sorry. No? Thank you, sir. Next one up, anybody wants to speak in questions, concerns, or opposition?
Fifty-eight. You've got to be polite.
Feel free to pull that mic down, and then just give us your name and address.
Is that okay?
That's perfect.
I have something.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Judy Hogan. This is my husband, Dan Hogan. We live at seventy-one Watson Street in Nashua. My husband and I are highly opposed to the proposed variance for fenced-in area for outdoor use for a doggy daycare at One Hardy Street. On September ninth, we obtained a copy of the August twenty-sixth analysis prepared for the zoning board by Mr. Carter Fark, the deputy planning manager, which lists five conditions that should be met for your granting a variance, and he wrote under each one of the five stated conditions, a number of explanations of the various conditions. In our opinion, the applicant did not satisfy many of the conditions. On number one, quote, "Enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship," unquote. Although this Hardy Street property is located in a local business zone, there are many reasonable uses that can be made of the property that would be permitted. On number two, not alter the character of the neighborhood. The use as a doggy daycare of three or twenty to forty barking dogs would certainly alter the essential character of the neighborhood. On number three, quote, "Not diminish the value of surrounding properties," unquote. The surrounding property values would definitely decrease when they are subjected to all the barking dogs. The applicant's claim, the applicant's claim that the proposed fencing will control the outdoor pet area and provide privacy and security to the neighborhood is wishful thinking. On number four, not contrary to the public interest. The, quote, "Public interest," unquote, should amend the Nashua zoning ordinance to relegate this type of dog business to the far reaches of the city. On number five, quote, "Substantial justice would be done to the property owner," unquote. It is our opinion, the benefits to the applicant outweigh the harm to the general public and to many other individuals. I hope that you will consider the many families and the many single-family homes in the Hardy Street, Amherst Terrace, Kirk Street, and Buiker Street, and please deny this request. Thank you.
Ma'am, just for, ma'am, just for a point of clarification, and, and maybe I misunderstood you when you spoke, and it's just a point of clarification, the letter you received from Mr. Fark explaining all this, if you read it, it's what the, he's only stating what the applicant is asking for. So it's not Mr. Fark or the city's position on any of this, he is just- He is just putting this together as part of what's required for us to have the information for. So I just want you to know that this is, the wording here is not from Mr. Fark or from the city. Doesn't represent their opinion. It just represents what the applicant was applying for.
All right.
And so he's just helping describe that for us, okay? So I just want you to know that.
I thank you for that clarification.
Okay, all right.
Yes, yes. I guess additionally, we would say that of all of the doggy daycare centers that we have observed and we have taken a little trip to see some of them, they're all out toward the outer limits of the city. There's none, there isn't one. We looked at many and there wasn't one that was in a residential area that would affect the neighbors and families like this one will. I mean, no one who has a family wants to live next to a doggy daycare center. And I don't know whether one in the city of Nashua exists within a residential area. Do you?
No, not off here.
So this is brand-new territory. And I think it's a big mistake for the city to allow this in a community where there's a school, there are two busy streets, there is a city bus stop. It's not isolated, like most of the ones we saw are very isolated in areas that are warehouses or former business centers with lots of parking, no pedestrian traffic. I mean, they're the ideal settings for this kind of a business. But downtown, where families live, where children walk to school, it seems very inappropriate to me. And I hope you will agree with me and with the families that live there.
All right, thank you, ma'am, for coming. Appreciate it. Any questions? Anybody else like to speak with questions, concern, or opposition to the application?
Good evening, members of the Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Allison Hogan. I live at 7 Hardy Street in Nashua. My property is the one that is physically abutting this proposal. As the resident whose property immediately abuts the proposed dog daycare facility put forth by applicant Ms. Ally Bird and property owner David and Stevens Lannazas, trustee of the Lannazas Family Trust, I am highly opposed to the variance being considered. There are two main points to consider. The welfare of the animals to be serviced and the effect on the immediate community. As a service member, I know the healing services which canine companionship can offer. As a former dog owner, Lady and Baron Hogan resided as good doggy citizens of Nashua at 7 Hardy Street for a while. I am sympathetic to having a business where dog daycare is provided. However, this proposal will be a disservice to dogs. The lot size available was not large enough for my two dogs. Never mind the proposed 10 to 20 dogs per day. My greatest fear for my dogs was if they were ever to get loose and run out to either State Route 130 or State Route 101A. Six lanes of traffic moving at 35 miles an hour. The waste of that number of dogs, as they did mention, the outside area would be specifically used as a bathroom service area. With my two dogs, hmm. The waste of that number of dogs will be on par with an animal shelter and with only one or two employees beyond the ability to maintain a clean and healthy environment for the dogs and the surrounding neighborhood. While I applaud the desire to create a more homey environment, this area is not the right spot for the proposed business. The effect on the neighborhood would be especially detrimental. Based on the proposed fencing, the amount of traffic will definitely engage the dogs to vocalize and emergency vehicles will further increase the noise. We're just down the street from Amherst Fire Department. Use it all the time. I would receive complaints for my dogs and I address with various techniques myself when Baron and Lady would be vocal. Mitigating the noise of 20 dogs would be untenable or considered undesirable by most clientele. The smell of the dogs, not going to be contained by a fence, will negatively impact the homeowners and restaurants immediately in the vicinity. We have Pan Asia and we also have Shere Kiku and Giovanni's. The traffic generated by the customers of the chiropractic office often created hazardous conditions on Hardy Street. Illegal parking, speeding, blind sides. My son was hit coming out of, my son, he was in a car, but he was hit backing out of our driveway because they had so many cars parked illegally and somebody came down Hardy Street and tagged him in the rear end. Anyway, and it has been much quieter since the chiropractic business left. Resuming a business in that location will bring back these same issues. I would argue that the zoning variance to allow a business at that location was a mistake and should be revoked based on the improved living conditions since it has left. Hardy Street is a barrier street to the neighborhoods that reside behind it. As I run my two-mile PT circuit to stay fit, to serve our country, I pass Mr. Goodwin's home, the Tapers' home, my cousin's, Timmy, Laura, and Nancy's home, my Uncle Jim and Aunt Marilyn, and the neighbors I grew up with swimming at the pool during summers in the homes of new families who bought their starter homes from folks who have since moved on. There is a housing shortage in Nashua for affordable living spaces and while I applaud the desire to take care of our canine friends' needs, we have to take care of the citizens first. Protecting the value of the homes of neighbors and families that make up this community must come first. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions? Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition?
I'm Mike Burke. I live at 3 Amherst Terrace, so kind of props from right here. So the carport kind of points to our house. I'm a new resident there, been there three years. And as far as like my relationship with the former owners there.
If you just get closer to the mic because it's tough to pick up.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, my relationship with the former owners there, I didn't really run into a lot of the situations that some of my neighbors have. As far as like snow removal, they actually plowed my lawn one time. So I didn't have that animosity with them, but I do, I do agree with some of the issues that are there, such as the parking was, seemed like an issue to me. Just my driveway is right here, basically.
You have to talk into the mic, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so my driveway is right here, basically. So sometimes they'd park right here and just make it hard to back out just and, because they're partially in the road as well. So that was one of the issues that I noticed. As far as property values, I think that, I mean, just the people here today speaking against it, to me, I don't, I mean, I don't really know. I don't know the property values, but the fact that there's so much opposition to it makes me think that my property value would decrease if it was approved. And also, we do own the land where, along the edge here, where they would be parking, where they parked at the former business. And we were always worried if someone was to slip and fall on that property, if we would be liable, and we were just worried about that. So that's the other thing. That's all I have.
Okay. I went around the neighborhood.
Sure.
And I wasn't looking for parking, no parking signs. Is there?
No, there's no parking sign. Well, I mean, we don't, we don't mind people parking there, like, if our neighbors want to park there or basically, not every day. We, I mean, we'd prefer people not to park there over and over again. I mean, we could put up a sign, but we also want to be friendly to our neighbors as well.
So there is new official no parking from the city?
No, no.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that that.
I believe there's no overnight parking there, but parking in general.
Well, there's no overnight parking in the whole city, except for designated streets.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Any questions for the, for the gentleman? All right, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Ma'am, I'm sorry, you only have one.
I just wanted to clarify, this question of no parking.
Well, we can, I'm sorry that, just by the rules, it's nothing personal. We're just following the rules, but the people in opposition will, one person will have an opportunity to come back and speak at the end. So certainly get your point in when that happens, okay? Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Ma'am, come on up and give us your name and address. You pull that down.
I'm Marilyn Hogan and I live at 51 Pine Hill Avenue. And nobody mentioned the smell. The smell from dogs is awful. We had somebody that walked in the neighborhood and the dog peed on the telephone pole and then you'd get the whiff. You know, we get the whiff, even though it's from probably 25 feet. You know, and I asked her and she stopped doing it. But I think, you know, with a doggy, with all those dogs peeing, what happens to the grass after a while? You know, and I pity the people who live on, to get the whiff, the ones that live on Swat Terrace, no, it isn't Swat, whatever that street was, Amherst Terrace. Whoever lives there, they're the ones that's going to get the whiff constantly. And then every time a fire engine goes by, the dogs, they howl. We hear dogs three streets down from our house. You know, they're barking. A siren goes by, you hear the dogs. We have no air conditioning. We keep our windows open and so you hear all this noise. So I would be against it. If I lived on Amherst Terrace, I'd be livid. And so I'll speak for them and that's, just take that into consideration. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am, for coming. Appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Nobody? Okay, sir. You have five minutes to come back and probably try to answer the questions or whatever you want to tell us.
Sure. Thank you again, Chad Brandon, engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. I guess just to touch on, you know, a number of things. We are not proposing to park at all along the sides of the street. We're actually proposing to close off the fencing along Amherst Terrace. It sounds like there was some, you know, drive-through activities with the former owner. We're here tonight to present our proposal. And again, there's a lot of talk about the use. The use is permitted. What we're talking about is just the outdoor component. So the use is permitted for the pet services to occupy that building. The use is allowed. So it is in character with the neighborhood because it's a permitted use. What we're talking about is utilizing an existing fenced-in area. One gentleman, you know, claimed that we're coming into the neighborhood and fencing, you know, and creating this enclosure. No, we're actually taking advantage of the enclosure that currently exists and we're replacing a section of fence that apparently was removed for maybe some parking, you know, needs through this area right here. So we're closing that off. The traffic along Amherst Street is there. I mean, the fencing is going to keep, you know, the animals in there. Again, two to three animals at a time in the fence. You have employees there that maintain the yard area. I mean, in order to run an appropriate business, you have to, you have to have, you know, mechanisms in place to take care of, you know, the waste and so on. People come, will come and ultimately visit a place to see where their animal's going. I mean, they're, they are parts of everybody's family. I have four dogs and my backyard is in a mess. And, you know, so it just, it depends on how it's maintained. I think, you know, to come up here and talk about your concerns about the welfare of the pets, well, I think that's kind of part of our point here. The use is allowed with no outdoor space. So do you think it's a good idea to keep the pets inside all day? Because that's allowed. We wouldn't have to be here for that. We think this is an essential part of a use that's already permitted in this zone. It's already been, you know, a commercial lot. It's in a local business district. This is where the city actually wants this type of a use. We're talking about utilizing, the reason why this site is such a good location for it is because, you know, maybe there isn't, you know, a service like this in the area. The 217 West Hollis Street that was mentioned, I think, by Mr. Fark, that was in the LB zone and that got this variance. The same variance that we're before you this evening asking for was obtained. That actually, I believe, was the site that set the precedence for us having to seek this variance because the interpretation was made for the same reasons on that particular site. Because we questioned it, because it doesn't really fit all of the definitions. We're not selling dogs. You know, we're not looking for people to come in here and look at dogs. It's not an outdoor display area, but it is a fenced-in area associated with the business. That's the interpretation. That's, you know, why we're here. It's not going to change the character of the neighborhood. I mean, you have Amherst Street, you have some noise. The dogs are going to hear the traffic all day long. So traffic isn't necessarily going to make dogs bark. I can tell you, our business is located in Milford, right next to an animal shelter. Our parking lot is right next to an animal shelter. And there was a chain link fence there and the dogs barked every time we got out of the car. You put up a stockade fence and, you know, the dogs don't see you and there's already background noise and it doesn't create a stir. So I think the design of this site and the way it exists right now actually presents a great location for what we're proposing in an area that's permitted. The, you know, there's a lot of statements about assuming that it's not going to be taken care of properly or maintained properly. And I think that's a step in the, you know, in the wrong direction. There obviously was some concerns about the former use and the policing of parking and snow storage. Those are planning items, but we meet all the zoning criteria as it relates to that. So we, you know, we look forward to addressing those items as we move forward. A dog daycare use, people stop in for a very short period of time to drop their animal off and then they're gone. So it's, you don't have, you know, people staying in a parking space for a long period of time. It works. And we're talking, like I said, around 10 dogs. I don't know where 20 dogs, you know, came into play, but I think that, you know, the numbers are being casted out there to try to, you know, shade the project and the proposal when it's not factual. We believe we addressed all the criteria. I think that the interpretation is very strict and if you have a permitted use, in any kind of a pet service area, you're going to have an outdoor component. It's, it's just going to be there. So by default, we think that presents hardship. And, you know, we've stated that in our, in our application. You know, there was mention about cheap fencing. I mean, this isn't, it's not cheap fencing. So there's just, there's a lot of items that were raised and I understand that, you know, the abutters have some concerns if it's not an appropriately-run business, but I think that, you know, you gotta, you gotta appreciate the proposal and the investment and the fact that it's a permitted use. And we're here specifically requesting something of an outdoor quality, utilizing an outdoor area. The use is permitted. A lot of the comments that were related to the use, wrong location for the site, you know, looking to change the zoning of the town or the city. We're not doing any of that. You know, those are, those are misstatements. They're incorrect.
I believe you're out of time, sir.
Oh, thank you. I think that, I think that covers everything.
So I have a question for you. Is there, would the, would your client, is there, I'm just talking aloud just as we move forward, when we get to the public meeting, a public hearing, a public meeting we start discussing this, just for myself, is there any type of restrictions? And again, I'm not saying that I'm leaning one way or another. I'm just curious as we're looking at discussion, leaning, any type of leeway in limiting the number of dogs out at one time? So again, I understand that, you know, you can't have one person control, you know, 10 dogs, right? Is there, and again, I don't know if it's possible, if it's even legit, but let's say, hey, there's a maximum of two dogs out at one time. So that, and I'm looking at more of the impact to the neighborhood. You follow what I'm saying? So it would be no different than if somebody owned two or three dogs, right? A couple of dogs that were out in the yard as the neighbor does. Neighbor testified that they had at one time. Is there any leeway there or any, or does that not make sense for this business at all?
I would just ask if I could have a minute to review that with my client because I don't feel comfortable answering that without.
One other question that I would have. One other question that I would have is, and again, I know this is going to come up at Planning Board, but maybe, maybe not. In previous applications for dog daycare centers and stuff, they always present some type of waste management. Like this is what we're going to do. This is not something we're just going to throw in a barrel and leave at the end of the street. What's the plan at this site to, I guess, you know, I'm not a dog owner. I own other types of animals, but I don't know a dog owner. So I, I can't appreciate maybe what you have to do to keep your property in a condition where it doesn't appear to be like it's just a big dog, you know, a dog park type thing. So what's the plan here to control that or to, you know, work on that? So that would be the other question.
Okay.
Okay? And then the property itself, I know that, you know, obviously if you let everything go, you're going to kill the grass, right? So I'm assuming that what, what they're trying to do is obviously keep in the area that's decent for the dogs, right? Not just gravel type of area, right?
Yeah, that's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. Is there any other questions for the applicant at this point? Because what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask whether or not you will allow him to confer with his, his client for a few minutes just to get the answers I need.
If I may. How many doors are there between the building that'd be used for the daycare and the fenced-in enclosure?
I believe there's one door. Is that correct?
There's two doors in the building.
But there's only one in the fenced-in enclosure, the way we have it shown.
Well, our proposed fence plan would have another door.
Okay. So there would be two, there would be two doors into the fenced area.
So could you just show me where those are?
I believe, well, there's an existing door here.
Will you pull the microphone out, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I do believe there's an existing door here. And it sounds like there may be a new door here. Is that?
But either by the fence or the building.
In the fenced-in area.
So between the carport and the house, there would be fences and that would be.
Okay, so, hold on a minute.
My question is, is whether or not there will be another door from the, from the building into the fenced-in enclosure other than the one that is parallel, or that's facing Amherst Terrace?
I think there would be another door here along the side.
Why don't you verify that?
Okay.
Maybe when, maybe when we can, maybe if you can go ask questions. Would that be fair, Mr. Mancaro?
Yes.
Just to get it.
Absolutely.
So that testimony is in the mic at the podium. Do you have any more questions? Any other questions for the applicant? I'm going to make a motion to allow the applicant's representative to go confer with his client for a few minutes. Make that motion. Anybody second that? Mr. Lionel, all in favor? It's five to nothing. Give you a few minutes. So the client's going to confer and then in a few minutes, we'll get back to testimony. And then those in opposition that came up to speak, I'm going to let you know that only one person is going to be able to come back. So if you guys want to huddle and talk about anything you want to talk about at this point?
He has a dog.
Okay?
That would have been a good question. Her experience in doing what she's doing with a dog here.
She was in front of us before. She has. This case is far more interesting than I thought.
Yeah. He was a head. My relationship with the owner. Maybe he weren't here. Yeah. It's weird that he was the owner. He's been around. I'm talking about.
Okay, we're going to come back to order, please. If you can just have your seat, please. Are you all set, Mr. Brandon? Just give me just one minute. Okay, folks, we're going to come back. Okay, we're back in the session. Mr. Brandon, you've had our questions, so feel free to, go ahead.
Thank you for the additional time to get some clarification. So there was some confusion about the door question. There is only one door out of the building that will be into the fenced-in area. And that is the one out the back in this location.
As far as the number of dogs at any one time, the client would be comfortable with limiting that number. She's, she's proposing that that number be four. Just because, you know, it's, it's good to, you know, you got to keep an eye on, you know, all of the dogs. And if you can break them up into, you know, smaller groups, four would be a comfortable number for the business operations. And then with the waste, when they pick up the waste, it's immediately bagged. So there is, you know, and it actually gets double bagged and they keep it in a sealed container. And then it gets disposed of appropriately from there. So that would address any of the smell concerns because it is bagged immediately. Obviously, they don't want animals to traffic through, you know, that and then bring that back inside the building. So there is a routine maintenance in keeping the, the area outside upkept and clean. And, you know, that's an important practice for, and part of the business plan for this site. I think those were the three things, but certainly if there was anything else.
So, so again, that's going to keep the property maintained with the grass and all that, right? That's, the idea is if you clean up right away, you're not killing.
That's correct.
Right. And you're going to, the appearance of the property is going to stay as it was before.
That's correct. Yeah, you're, if you leave it there, then obviously it has the potential to, you know, to kill the grass. And that's, the goal is to maintain that and, and keep the conditions as they are now.
Anything else?
I think that addressed the three questions that were asked, but I'd certainly be happy to.
Just wanted to show you had gotten everything out. Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we're at a point now, those that were in opposition or with questions have an opportunity to come back for five minutes. And that is only one person that can represent the group. So have you chosen a representative for the group? Does anybody want to come? Okay, come on up, ma'am, and you have five minutes. Just give me a name and address again for the record.
Allison Hogan, 7 Hardy Street. Looking at the application, there are three particular points that jump out at me. Number two, not alter the character of the neighborhood. This is a significant alternance of the character of the neighborhood. Number three, not diminish the value of surrounding properties. The waste management plan is inadequate. Last time I checked, you can't bag pee. Dogs that are at a shelter are nervous. Having worked as a shelter volunteer for years, when dogs are nervous, their defecation is loose. The stool cannot be scooped up. That is why shelters have cement floors so that they may hose them down. On number four, not contrary to the public interest. There is a strong evidence of public disinterest in this variance as witnessed by the people that have come forward tonight. Everyone starts off with good intentions. In this, like current political venue or avenue or whatever that we find ourselves in, there's a lot of us versus them. If they don't agree with you, they're the enemy. I want it clearly known that the neighborhood does not look at this business as the enemy. You are not a bad person. I think that you have a great idea, but this is not the place for it.
You didn't address us. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This is not the place for it. I hope that the business is successful. If it is, that parking is inadequate. It will not suffice. And we will resume the same problems that we had before with the chiropractic office, which was also very successful. There is a no parking sign along 7 Hardy Street on this side of the property. And they would abuse it all the time, park in my driveway, park across the street from my driveway so I couldn't get out and lead to various other issues. The fence that is currently in position, which was clearly stated tonight, they are intending to reuse that stockade fence or the, it is inadequate. As a dog owner, it does not take long for a dog to dig underneath it and there's already gaps underneath that fence. Water rushes down Amherst Street, erodes the dirt that is abutting the major portion of that fence. It will not take a dog very long at all to make a hole and get out and escape and get hit. That is why when I had my fence for my dogs, I had to turn it into sort of like a rabbit, protective rabbit warren, to keep them out of the garden. It went down into the earth. A chain link fence went down into the earth and over. What they have presently in place is not going to be adequate. And it concerns me greatly that they think that it is, even though they've had a lot of time to come up with this plan. One to two employees will not be enough to monitor those dogs. The liability issues are definitely a concern considering the back area belongs to the folks on Amherst Terrace, an escaped dog. Especially since the owner did address my mother directly and tell her that she was looking at expanding to behavioral problem dogs for this and turning this into a shelter over time. I do not want that. I do not think the neighborhood wants that. It would be definitely detrimental to the house values. Again, it's not a bad idea. This is just not the neighborhood for it. I have no further questions or comments.
Any questions? Thank you very much. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Mancaro.
This is a tough one for me. I thought I came into it clearer than I think I feel now, so I think I need to talk it through a little bit. I guess the starting point for me is, is that the use itself isn't at issue. It is a permitted use. Whether it should be or shouldn't be, it is. So a doggy daycare has been determined to be allowed in this district. So the issue before us is the outdoor area. And, and I do concur with the applicant in that having an outdoor area with a doggy daycare business or most pet-related businesses is an essential use. So I have no problem getting to there. I guess my questions concern, are largely concerned about the impacts, you know, to the surrounding area. And I guess that's where I need help. Initially, when I looked at it, I also saw it bounded by three streets, which I think also buffered it pretty significantly. There is a lot, you know, this is a busy area. There is a lot of noise. There is a residential butter directly behind it who would be the most impacted. So I, I'm, you know, those things are still, I guess I haven't quite reached resolution yet. And I'd be interested to hear what my colleagues think.
Mr. Lionel.
Well, I agree with Mr. Mancaro that this is a permitted use and that the proposed outdoor area is a reasonable and essential use for pet services. We are asked when, when we're looking at granting a use variance, there are five points that we all have to agree are met. And the first one about enabling the applicant's proposed use of the property, that seems pretty clear. That it's within spirit and intent of the ordinance, that also seems pretty clear. But then we get to the impact on the neighborhood property values. And we have substantial testimony tonight that this would be a negative impact to the neighborhood and a negative impact to property values. And I believe that to be the case. Given that I can't find support for those two items, I would tend to not be in support of the variance.
Thank you. Like Mr. Mancaro, I struggled a little bit with this. And I had the same vision before I came here. I drove around the neighborhood. And maybe because it's quiet now and this business non-operational. So I didn't see the issues that the neighbors have to live with. So I, I have to appreciate, you know, what they're bringing in front of us. So the struggle again for me is exactly what Mr. Mancaro says. This is an approved use, the dog daycare center for this district. Whether or not we believe that it belongs in this part of Nashua, it's, you know, not germane to this conversation. It's really the having of the outside dogs. And so of the area for the, for the dogs. And again, it doesn't make sense to have one without the other. So I struggle with this because, you know, of the nature of what we're asking for. So, you know, I'm, I'm trying to picture, you know, if the business didn't, you know, it certainly could be somebody that comes in and says, I'm going to provide some system that the dogs do their business inside. And I just, this is what I do, right? But that, again, not practical, obviously, for, for a bunch of reasons. So I'm just wondering if there is really, you know, we're looking at this, this site and, you know, are there other opportunities or ways to achieve that? But, you know, again, I think we're here to looking at that outdoor display, that idea. And, you know, I certainly believe that, you know, if we were to move, if we were to move forward with this, you know, the Planning Board has a whole different criteria. And this is not about putting any problem or pushing a problem off. It's just really looking at the application, what it is. Because some of the issues that, that we've heard and we're looking at are really not, we can make some stipulations, but some of this from the site plan is not, we're not, you know, that's not what we're here for. And I think we've got those experts at that level. So, you know, just because something is approved here doesn't mean that it gets approved at the Planning Board stage or vice versa, right? So not vice versa, just it doesn't, doesn't go forward. So, so I'm struggling with this because I think that, again, it's permitted use. But how do, you know, I'm just trying to wrap myself around this area, and I guess maybe I'm looking at the area and not comparing now with West Hollis Street, but the outdoor area is much smaller than this. Their outdoor area is much smaller than this. They have special, they have special turf or whatever that is actually collecting, and they have a system in place. So, you know, with that, I felt very good about that, you know, when we had that case in front of us, only because I'm saying this because of what they were providing. So, you know, I've used that business after the fact. My wife did. And when I got there, I saw, you know, there were several people outdoor with the dogs, and it wasn't, I didn't find it crazy that, you know, they have the, same thing, stockade white, stockade type fencing, but again, they had a special designed area for the dogs. So I'm just looking at this and whether or not the impact would be less, maybe with something more designed or more, not compact, but designed for this purpose. And so I don't know if that's, how that would be achieved. So I guess what I'm saying is that if in front of us, or there was some way to say, hey, that mimicking what we were, 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 what we had looked at, what was proposed, I think was very well planned, made a lot of sense, and I would be more comfortable with that at this site and not using this whole back area as the dog, you know, as a dog area. Now, then that may not make sense for this business owner, but I think that's the only way I can get around that. And again, I think that there was a lot, there was, you know, there was definitely conversations or comments to the way that, the way dogs were controlled and brought in and out, and it was very specific on how long the dogs would be out and that type of thing. So again, I have no issues with the business or with the person proposing. I think it's really more of a site of this display unit and what, you know, what's being displayed here. So that's where I'm at right now. So that's where my struggle is. So. Ms. McKay.
Okay. I think I'm probably in the same place. It's a permitted and allowable use. It's essential and reasonable to have the outdoor use. It's necessary. The impact is unknown. The impact on the former business is known, and it was brought up, but the actual impact on what this particular establishment will bring is an unknown. It's an assumption. Dogs bark, so people assume that dogs are going to bark. There was a parking issue, so it's assumed there's going to be a continued parking issue. But again, these are all assumptions. I completely concur with our chair when he brought up the waste management system, because that's what I was thinking. And I would be amenable, if, you know, to tabling this, to give maybe the owners an opportunity to look into that type of a system and maybe come back with some kind of determination, which would respond to the neighbors. I think one of their largest concerns is the odor and the idea of the aesthetics. Other than that, it's allowable, it's permissible, and the outside is necessary. So it's a struggle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Boris.
Nothing more to say.
So if I could just, you know, follow along those lines, that was the reason I asked about the surface treatment, because I recall in the past hearing a pretty detailed explanation of the surface treatment and how it would mitigate odor. And that's kind of what I was looking to hear, although I hesitate to speculate, having been a dog owner, that's not a very large, you know, grassy area, and I do become concerned as to what's going to happen to that turf. It's going to be very, very difficult, you know, to keep that. So I share that sentiment. I would have liked to have heard more about that, and the reason I kept harping on the door was to see if it is impossible to pull the fenced-in area back away from the abutter to the rear, canopy smaller, canopy more confined. So whether or not a restriction on the number of dogs, people are allowed to have dogs. People have dogs in this neighborhood, you know, what's normal, what's typical and customary. So if people have dogs out in their yard and the fire engine goes by, they're going to, that's going to, so that's a given.
I found out you can have up to seven dogs without a license to sit in there. I think the seven dogs are licensed, so I found out outside of the neighborhood had a lot of dogs.
So what becomes, what's the point at which the impact is beyond what would typically occur anyway? I don't necessarily have that answer, but, you know, your question about, is there a limit to the number that could be out, kind of speaks to that, is to minimizing impact. So whether it's appropriate to table it for more feedback, or whether it's appropriate to, I suppose, not approve it at all, you know, or put some conditions on it that we could craft. I think that the difficulty is, is if, I don't know how we could craft conditions around particularly that issue of waste management and site management. And I think it's relevant because what we're being asked to approve is in fact the outdoor area. So issues related to how that outdoor area appears, or is managed, or functions, I think is relevant to our decision. How to get there is the struggle I have.
Ms. McKay.
I think that's why I suggested the tabling, because that is the most pertinent issue. That's the issue that we're all hung up on. We all expected to hear, I think, based on our other case, and we didn't. And so that's what we were looking for. Almost this gives an opportunity to bring that forward.
So if we could come back to that just in a second, and just so we don't forget about, the required parking on this site is what, per ordinance?
Required parking is met, actually.
Right, okay.
But sometimes there's, you know, what's required on paper or in the ordinance versus the real-life issues, and it may be different.
So we heard a lot about what the last business produced over there, and certainly that's just another concern that I have. The situation didn't exist at this point. I think, again, we've done this in a couple of different ways, right? We've had, we've had different businesses, home businesses, where we'd say, hey, or childcare, parking has to be done in the driveway. We've put stipulation on it in certain areas where drop-offs have to be done in that person's driveway, not on the street. The music lesson one that we just did. So, you know, in this case here, there's a couple of ways of looking at this. It's, and again, I want to make sure that, A, do we want to address it or not? If we do, do we need to do something there? And B, this is also going to the planning board, right? So again, I don't want to give the planning board, they want clear direction, right? So whatever motion we make, it has to be clear to them what our intent is, and my intent is not to pass issues on or to create issues or to be vague about something. So it's either, again, they do site plans. This is something that they do. So if it's better addressed there, in this case, if we were to move forward of tabling or whatever, if it's better left there, then I think, again, the people that came in the audience to testify also should know that if this were to move forward to the planning board stage, that that is a whole other set of criteria and a place to go and testify. So I just wanted to bring those up to make sure that, you know, that we were not forgetting those, because I think for me, the biggest, not the biggest issue, I appreciate the impact of the neighborhood. I believe personally that the site plan should be addressing the issues with the applicant and what your expectation of, when is people coming and all that. But my issue with this is the impact of the outdoor display area and whether or not a design or something can be maybe done within the confines of what they were proposing or what, I don't know. So that's, I just wanted to bring that up. So I think we still need to discuss what we want to do with that. I just wanted to bring that up, just so we didn't forget about it.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I do see parking as being, parking circulation traffic is very much a planning board issue because we're not being asked to approve the use in this case. So yeah, I zoom in on the usage and the management of that outdoor area.
So what, at this point, what's the board's feeling on, do we feel like we should table and ask the applicant to come back and give us more detail on, or give them the opportunity to revisit the outdoor display area? Not specifically telling what to do, but they've heard this conversation, everybody has, and given that the opportunity, or do you want something specific? Ms. McKay.
I think in the applicant's and in the neighborhood's best interest, and in our best interest to make an informed and complete decision, we should table this and allow more information to come forward so that we can actually make a good decision. That's my opinion.
I would support that.
Okay. Mr. Lionel, do you agree? I'll, let me say this. We'll take a vote on whether or not we will...
I don't object.
Okay, all right. And Ms. Boris?
I'm in agreement.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion to ask the applicants representative to come back up, just to ask for a date certain to come back, if they wish to come back. Okay? So I'll make a motion to open the public hearing, specifically to ask the applicant representative, Mr. Brandon, to come back and give us a date certain of when to come back for, come back on this application. Second by Ms. McKay. All in favor? That's five to nothing. Mr. Brandon, if you can, if you've been following along, we just want to, A, do you want to come back? So we'd like to table for more information. So you have the choice of coming back to do that or not coming back, and then we would just move to a vote.
Sure. We certainly appreciate the discussion, and we would like to come back with some additional details to address some of the concerns that have been raised.
Okay.
And we would ask that hopefully we could be continued to your next available agenda, just because we are under a timeframe with the project.
Next one is September 24th.
September 24th would be the next available date.
That would be great.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You need to have information for that date.
What's the date you need information from?
Well, preferably within a week, so we can get the package out to the board. That'd be by next Monday.
Is that possible?
If that's possible.
By next Monday? Like this coming Monday?
What is it that you need from him?
Well, you know, from what I understand, the board would like to see some kind of a more detailed or possibly a more confined area and how the waste is being treated or taken care of. So I would think you would want it in your package that goes out next Monday, which is the 17th, to get to you a week in advance for the 24th.
Okay.
What's the next meeting? After that?
After that.
October 8th, I believe?
October 8th. We would like to try for, it's September.
October 8th.
And try to get you the information for that timeframe.
You can get it at the meeting, but I just wonder if you'd want to have it, to think about it.
So this is just the risk, right? It's because, again, the staff mails out packages to all of us. We have a time to review those packages. If we got it close to the meeting, we would do, every one of us would make an effort to try to view, but if it's too close to the meeting or if it's the day of the meeting, some of us obviously have daytime jobs, and so we want to, we're just saying this because we want to be as fair to the process as it is. But if this is not to your schedule, or you feel that you're being rushed, you know, then there's going to be some way. So there's a risk either way. If you got the package out and we got it three or four days by email, again, we may not have a full, bigger sized drawing, so we, you know, I'm just telling you what the challenges are.
Right.
For the members of the board.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, and we'll do our best to get that in by Monday. If it's, I mean, comfortably, if we had a day or two longer, that would be better, but we, you know, we'll do our best to get that in.
All right. So if for some reason something doesn't work out, please call Mr. Fark, and we can, he'll postpone it to the following meeting. Okay? All right. So right now, we'll go with the 24th.
Sounds great.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing, open the public meeting. Reopen the public meeting. I'll make a motion to table, I'm making a motion to table this application to a date certain of September 24th, so that the applicant can get us more information. Seconded by Ms. McKay. All in favor? Five to nothing. Okay?
Thank you.
With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number five.
We're not discussing that. We can't discuss that anymore. That's not you.
What is she saying?
Let me know when you're all set.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to stay closer.
Excuse me, folks. Excuse me, for those in the audience, we're going to start the next case, so if you want to have a conversation, feel free to step out of the hallway. Thank you very much. I'd like to open case number six. The owner is William and Linda Porter. The applicant is Ken Grant of 30 Karen Ave. The description is William and Linda M. Porter, owners, Ken Grant, applicant, 30 Karen Avenue, Sheet 49, Lot 79. Requesting a variance on land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach eight feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to construct and attach eight-by-12 farmer's porch in the RA district. Welcome. Continue in address, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kenneth Grant. I am the contractor for Mr. and Mrs. William Porter of 30 Karen Ave. Wish to put the farmer's porch on the front of their house.
The size of the structure and wide size and...
Eight feet off the house, and it's 12 feet long across the front of the house, and it's going to have a full roof on it.
So he said 12 feet wide?
Yes.
So it's not the full width of the front of the house.
No, okay.
And it is, only because I see this just a side elevation, is it centered on that front door, kind of?
Yes, it is.
Centered, okay, so it's not shifted off. And again, when you drive on the street, obviously, a lot of people don't know, it's kind of deceiving, right, because the city owns a big swath of grass, so it didn't, doesn't look like an issue. Doesn't look like an issue, but...
He doesn't even know. He's been mowing the city's lawn for the past 20 years. Where'd he get his bill?
All right. So just, again, it's clear to me, it's an open structure. It's not an enclosed porch or anything like that, and basically for the enjoyment of the people, the folks that live there.
Exactly.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Mancaro.
Just regarding the size, the proportion, kind of, what drove, what made the decision to make it eight-by-12?
They decided that. They actually wanted an eight-by-12. Nothing to be extravagant, like a farmer's porch out there. They just wanted a small porch out in front. wanted a, a small porch out in front. So it has a little shade spot for them.
So the idea, again, I think to Mr. McKay, when we see a farmer's porch, usually the width of the house, that's why I asked what the width was, so instead of going with the house and narrowing, I think they're just looking for more of a, maybe where they could sit around.
Sit-down area.
Sit-down area, kind of, in facing each other.
Right out the front door, exactly.
So then, then that typical, they have three or four fort, you know, porch, okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All set? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. My only question was, obviously, was the, and Mr. Fark tricked me because I knew I was wondering what the width was, I didn't know what it was. I thought it was going to be the width of the house and was asking why, but now it's clearer to me what they're looking to do. Again, yeah, yeah, and I, and again, I think that, obviously, when you drive down this street, I think that when you see this, I don't, it won't appear like it's, like it's, like this big incursion. I, I think, you know, we understand that, that where the, where the property line is, but I think it, it will fit in nicely with the neighborhood and with the, with the house. So I'm in favor of the application. Anyone else? Mr. Lionel?
When I went through the neighborhood, I didn't see anything similar in other houses, but I, I don't have an objection to it.
I had, I had the same thought, I was kind of looking at the surrounding area to see if there was anything similar. I, I didn't see it either, although that said, it's certainly not uncommon in the city. The, the size is modest, the incursion into the front setback is relatively minimal of it, in particular, given the width of the right-of-way in front of the property, the grassy area, I don't think it would be perceived as an intrusion into the setback. Wouldn't be, nobody would go by and, wouldn't jump out of chairs, I'd say.
I concur with everything that's been said. It's, you know, a nice place to sit and just enjoy the birds.
Ms. Boris?
I'm also in favor.
All right, anybody like to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, William and Linda Porter, applicant is Ken Grant, address is 30 Karen Avenue, Sheet 49, Lot 79, requesting variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, to encroach eight feet into the 25-foot required front yard setback to construct an eight-foot by 12-foot farmer's porch. This is in the RA zone. The board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, the closeness of the house to the property line, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method. We believe that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We have no testimony about whether it would affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We don't believe that it's contrary to the public interest and substantial justice would be served, therefore I make a motion to approve this variance.
Ms. Boris seconds it? Any discussion? All those in favor? It's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Right. Have a good night, folks. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number six and open the public hearing for case number seven. Case number seven is owner Andre Guilleon, 55 to 57 Williams Street, requesting the following variances from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, for a minimum open space, 35% required, 25% proposed, and two from land use code section 190-193, for a minimum parking space dimensions, nine feet by 20 feet required, eight by 18 feet proposed. Both requests to construct a six-space, six-space parking lot for an existing three-family dwelling in the RB district. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks. Good evening, good to be before the board. My name is David Campbell, I'm attorney, in office at 20 Trafalgar Square. You just met the applicant, Mr. Kurian, we just passed that out because the pictures are in color and easier to define and, and those plans is as well. Basically, we're looking at the subject building at 55 to 57, 57 Williams Street. You can see the site, you can see that it's typical in many ways of the kind of bowling alley lots that are up there on Crown Hill. It's a multifamily structure. It was actually built as a three-unit dwelling about 1930, so almost 90 years ago, and it was built as a three, a three-unit building. There's entrances on the side, front, and back. So parking, you know, over the years, parking's become a problem. When it was built in 1930, it wasn't a problem, but it is now, and how they've gotten around it for a long time was by an agreement between, between the two owners, previous owners going way back, Mr. Kurian's owned it since 19, I'm sorry, since 2016, and the other neighbor came in in 2017. But 50 years ago, the neighbors were there and they came up with the idea they'll put a 20 by 16, which shows, I'll show you the pictures in a minute, 20 by 16 parking area right in the front of her lot, the adjacent lot, and then the exact same amount was the little fenced-in area that came on to, to the other property, which they used for a garden. And that was a, not a written agreement, and it was that way for a long time. So what happened is the new owner came, 2017, who we tried to contact, by the way, gave him all the information, acknowledged receipt of it, and never, never got back to us, so we assume that there's not a problem there. But he did want to discontinue that, that area. You want to show him those pictures? He's actually told, told Andre that no longer can the people park there, and he's posted it, no parking. So, so as a result of that, we, we needed to take care of something that probably needed to be taken care of all the time, and that's to have six spaces on premises, off highway, off the road. If you look at the pictures, I can kind of describe it. Here, photo one, you can see the front of the property, you can see the concrete driveway that runs about 75 feet along, that's an original concrete driveway that abuts the concrete sidewalk. There's a 20 by 16 paved space right there, that's, that's the place where two spaces were for a long time, which is not on the property. The reverse angle of that shows a car parked in that, those two spaces up front that are paved. Number three and number four on the next page, that basically shows you that the parking has been haphazard and on the grass anyway in the back for a long time. And the next one shows the problems with that, and this is, was a relatively dry summer, but after a rain, we did get some pictures of the puddles. When you have torrential downpours, that gets worse and, and muddy, and in the winter, you know, it's another problem. If you, it's interesting, if you look at the site plan, the GIS map that, that you have, and I didn't include it in that packet because it's better defined on the one you have, it actually shows three cars in the back, two cars in the front, and one, two cars in that little 20 by 16 area, and one in front. So, I mean, people have been getting along with that, but obviously you can't park overnight, and without those two spaces, it's becoming nearly impossible. So what we're proposing, and you go to the color plans, is basically to pave the blue area that would allow six spaces side by side, they'd be 18 by 8. I don't think the depth is a problem, because as long as the tires are on the pavement, you know, the bumpers can go over into the grass area in the back, and you can just, you can fit eight-foot spaces all the way along. To give you some perspective, the, the hot spaces out in back of City Hall that are, people come in all the time, those are nine feet wide. So I mean, I mean, if this was a residential use, I think eight feet is, is adequate, and there are examples of it, including the, the spaces in the front, which were eight feet wide. It's, this shows, the next plan shows what grass area would remain, and it'd be 25%. There's the six spaces shown on that plan. To go through the, the requirements of a variance, if I, you know, with the granting of the request, would it be contrary to the public interest? Well, the surrounding neighborhood is many multifamily dwellings on small lots. The granting of the variance will not diminish the essential character of the neighborhood, and by allowing the parking of all the tenant vehicles to be off the street and on premises, public safety is enhanced, there's a school nearby, Dr. Crisp is just around the corner, across the street. Will the proposed use observe the spirit of the ordinance? Well, we think it does, in the sense that the ordinance says that you should have off-premise parking, on-premise parking for your, for your multifamily dwellings, and the only problem here is, is dimensional. Would substantial justice be done? As a matter of practicality and reasonableness, in addition to attention to zoning ordinance, you know, a three-family apartment really does require two parking spaces per unit these days. You know, people, his, his, right now, he's got two people in each apartment, and they both work, and they both have cars, they need to commute, and there's no harm to the general public by the granting these variances. The proposed use will not diminish the value of property, the surrounding properties, don't see how that would happen in any way. In fact, getting, again, getting the cars off the street and on the premises probably enhances it. And finally, are there special conditions that literal enforcement of the ordinance would cause unnecessary hardship? Well, it's interesting, if you literally enforced the parking dimensions, you'd only have four spaces, which is inadequate, and you still wouldn't meet the, the green space requirement because of the, the pre-existing conform, the lot. I mean, what you have here is a, you know, is an unusual situation in that you have a lot that has a concrete entryway that runs right on the boundary of, of the property. It's 12 feet wide. It has a five-foot concrete sidewalk on the other side, it has a concrete apron on the back. If you just take that area and the footprint of the house, it's 52% of the lot. If you add anything beyond that, you'd want to, you know, it's going to cut into that green space, which is right on the line right now. As it, as it exists, it's about 35%. So this would, this would cut into it about, from 35% to 25%. And there are actually lots, if you look from the aerial, not the aerial, but the town map on the very front, this, this is site on it, you can see there's some big footprints on very small lots in the neighborhood, and that doesn't include the driveways. So we believe, and I really think that this is the kind of the classic reason why there is dimensional variances, is the fact that, you know, when, is there conflict between, you know, does this, do you have a, a ordinance that says, yes, parking spaces should be on premises, not on the street? Yes, well, and you can't do it only because of dimension? This is kind of a classic case of that. So since there's no substantial relationship between the public purposes, the dimensional provisions is the only impediment here. And as discussed earlier, you know, granting these dimensional variances will have no negative effect on the surrounding properties, is reasonable, and achieves the purpose of six on-premises, spaces with minimal impact, considering the special conditions that pre-exist on the lot. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Lionel?
Not really a question, but I just observed that with the big trucks that sometimes people have, eight feet might be pretty tight, and I, I don't really see how you can, can do much different here. But I'm, I'm looking at some of the, the space that's farthest away from the driveway. Some people are going to have a hard time pulling into that or pulling out straight, but.
We've, we've considered, that's a good point, Mr. Chairman, we, we consider that, and where you're going to have two spaces for each dwelling, for each apartment, you know, you can juggle out a little bit. We've also decided that in his lease, he's going to reserve the right to move, there'll be guaranteed two spaces, but they may be assigned somewhere else. For instance, if he had a truck, he'd probably put him in the, in the space straight end, he wouldn't put him over in the far left. So we're going to make, we're going to make provisions in the, in the lease to juggle him around to make that work. I mean, some, in some cases, you may not have six vehicles, you may only have five, but you need six spaces to do it. I, I will say that the applicant did talk to the, to the zoning staff with the surveyor who did the line, with me, and we all worked to try to come up with the proposal and the plan that would, you know, minimize impact on the green space and still get you six spaces.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
I'm, I'm good with this. You know, the, the space-wise, I, I think, you know, I think it'll work, I think that the, I'm not concerned about the space size, I think that, that, this is an issue that'll be relegated just to this property and, you know, the people that live there can, you know, will deal with that. I think that from the street, I don't think you'll see really that impact, I mean, you'll maybe see it coming down the street through the open lot, but I think this makes sense for this property owner. It is a big house, and, and he's right, there's a lot of houses here on, on these properties that are, are very good size, two-family, three-family homes. So, but, but I think this works for this property, and, and I really don't have anything negative to say, so I will be in support of the application.
I, I would agree, and I would just add, I mean, given the size of the parcel, there is really no other option. I, I agree that you do want to provide two spaces per unit. This is a pre-existing three-family, obviously came from the day before there was parking, so I think they've done the best they could to accommodate the parking that's needed and actually minimizing the encroachment into the open space, into the green area. So I think you've done as much as you can, and it's certainly in the public interest to keep the parking on the property and not have it all around the neighborhood, or parked where it shouldn't be, or blocking driveways, which is your only other option on this property.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I concur. Mr. McKay, and yourself.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. McKay?
You want to, you want me, I'll just.
No, if you don't want to, I'll make it, it's not a problem.
It's all right. So I, I would make a motion to approve the variance request of Andre Kurian for 55 to 57 Williams Street, requesting a variance from one, land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, for a minimum open space, 35% required, 25% proposed, and two from land use code section 190-190, or 193, for minimum parking space dimensions, nine by 20 required, eight by 18 proposed. Both requests in order to allow the construction of a six-space parking lot for an existing three-family dwelling. In looking at criteria number one, the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. I think with the testimony we received, providing two parking spaces per unit is certainly reasonable and arguably necessary in our area. Special conditions of the property being the size of the property and the fact that the three-family was constructed prior to zoning, prior to the need really for parking requirements, and applicants have demonstrated that there really is no other reasonable way you can achieve the necessary parking on the site. It is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance, certainly to provide a required off-street parking, will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, and we certainly heard no testimony to that effect. That would not be contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be done.
Ms. Boris seconds the motion, is there any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application's approved. All right, have a good night. With that, I will close case number seven. Okay, so next on the, next tonight, we got a rehearing request. Okay, so most of us were here, Ms. Boris, I know you weren't here, but she will vote on this. You can vote on this, and there's no problem with that. So you, I'm not telling you have to, if there's any reason you need to recuse yourself, but right now, you know, our bylaws state that, it's time members here and vote on this. So have you been here before when we've done this?
No.
Okay, so in your, in your package, there's a rehearing request, there are five, there are four questions are going to be answered, and we, what we do is we, we start with the first question, we go around the table, if there's any discussion, we'll have it. And again, we'll just answer those, each of us, and then we'll take a vote. And this is the process, this is a, this is, there's no testimony or anything allowed, this is just our process for a rehearing request, and if the rehearing request, if we deny this rehearing request, then the applicant has the opportunity to go to the, to a Supreme Court at this point, right? So this is just a process in place for an application that we heard less than 30 days. So this is just a process in place for an application that we heard less than 30 days ago, well, they gave notice, yeah?
I was here, but I stepped out.
Okay, oh yeah, absolutely, yeah, all right, because you had your packet and you went through the material.
Exactly.
Okay. So, well, we, this is a rehearing request from the 7/23/2019 public hearing. I don't know how to pronounce this. So I'll spell it out, it's the...
Gabhaltais Tila.
Gabhaltais Tila. I'll spell it out, the owner is G-A-B-H-A-L-T-A-I-S, and the last name is T-E-A-G-H-L-A-I-G-H-L-L-C. The request of the rehearing is Laura Smith, and the case address is 9 East Pearl Street. Again, a rehearing request from the 7/23/2019 public hearing. It was for 9 East Pearl Street, Sheet 34, Lot 20, requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, number 135, to allow a tattoo parlor and a portion of an existing building to the RC Zone Ward 4. So again, our process is, you know, I'll read the first question, and we'll go around the horn, and we'll give our answer or discussion for that. So the first question in the rehearing request is, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. Mr. McCarron?
No, and none, none, not in my opinion, and none was asserted.
All right. Ms. Lino?
No.
Ms. Boris?
No.
Ms. McKay?
No.
Mr. Boucher is no. Second question is, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the Board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance? Ms. Lino? Ms. Boris?
No.
Ms. McKay?
No.
Mr. Boucher is no. Number three, does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the Board at the original public hearing?
In my view, at the original public hearing, the applicants did assert that they had challenges finding other properties that were available, because the question, I think I brought up the question of, did you look at other properties, there were other properties available. So they did provide additional detail regarding that question. In my view, though, that really isn't sufficient to say is additional information that would make a difference in the outcome of the case, and I think it is information that was available, it just wasn't presented.
So there is new information, but it was just, I, if you just continue the discussion, is it fair to say that it's just a continuation on just expanding more of what we heard originally?
Yes.
All right. Great information, by the way. So, but, so what you're saying is that, your answer is no because...
It's not new information, it's more detailed, but it's not new information.
Okay. Mr. Lino?
I agree with what Mr. McCarron said, there's no new relevant information.
Ms. Boris?
I also agree, no.
Ms. McKay?
I agree.
Mr. Boucher is no also, per the discussion. The last question is, is there anything which could, which would or could cause the Board to make a different decision?
No.
Mr. Lino? Mr. McCarron was no, Mr. Lino?
No.
Ms. Boris?
No.
Ms. McKay?
No.
Mr. Boucher is no. Okay, so, so the motion for a rehearing request per the votes that we just took on all four items has failed. Okay, so...
We should make an overall motion.
Okay, all right, so, so I'll make an overall motion. Thank you, Mr. Fock, for that, we don't see this that often. So I will make a motion. So I'm going to make a motion to deny the rehearing request for Laura Smith, for 90 East Pearl Street, from the 7/23/19 meeting, that was requesting a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, 135, to allow a tattoo parlor and a portion of existing building, RC Zone Ward 4. So my motion is to deny the rehearing request.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. McCarron. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of denying the rehearing request? That's five to nothing. Case, my motion fails. All right, so next quarter of business is, the agenda for the next meeting is published, and, did we have that?
It should be on your table.
Yeah, I think so.
There's like four keys.
This one, yeah, okay. So, I just want to see if anybody sees any regional impact. I don't see anything on the outskirts of the city or anything, but, anybody see anything?
No.
There's one, the last one, it's plugged in the circle, that's very near Hollis, way in the top upper corner of the city, upper northwest portion of the city. We might notify them, just as an FYI, it's just a, but the thing is, it's not really a regional impact, it's really, it's just for a porch, so, but just, it's near the border of the city, that's all I'm saying, really.
It just says a courtesy, but...
A courtesy maybe, but they're not going to...
But we know there's, there would be no...
There's no, no, it's not like a mall or an airport or something like that.
New development, right.
Right.
Okay. So we don't see any regional impact, so no regional impact, and we didn't have any...
Probably no minutes.
Okay, there are no meeting minutes?
Not yet, it'll be at the next meeting.
Is there any other discussion?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion is to adjourn and discuss, discussion, women. Motion is to adjourn, anybody second that? Ms. Boris, thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning?
9:46.
Five to nothing, we're adjourned at 9:46. Thank you.